Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call this October 10th meeting of the Northfield Township Board to order. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Lauren, we've come before you today and we thank you for all the blessings that you have given us. Many times in our lives, we are so full of busy work that we neglect our relationship with you. We know that you never neglect us. Almighty God, for those, all those hearts who are open, all the desires known, and for those who have no secrets are hidden, cleanse our thoughts for this meeting as we work, as we do your work, in Jesus' name, amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and two republics from which stands one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, call the roll, please. Clerk Manley?
Bellinger.
Present.
Dockett.
Here.
Zelnak.
Present.
Chockley.
Here.
Manley, here. Otto.
Here.
And Chick is absent with notice.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, the consent agenda is before you, we need any of these reports pulled out for discussion later. Mr. Dockett.
I have quite a few. I'd like to pull the 9/26 board meeting minutes, the 9/28 meeting, the staff, retreat, I mean, fire department, sewer department, zoning, and clerk. Thank you.
Sewer, zoning, and which other one?
Clerk.
Clerk. The August election cost update, that one? Okay. Well, okay, sewer. I hope I got them all. Okay, so the 26 minutes, the 28 retreat, the fire department, sewer, the clerk, and zoning. Okay, zoning.
I just need a minute or so on.
Okay. I'd like to add those to the end of the agenda then, after 13, and we can take them in the order that you'd like to take them, then, Mr. Dockett.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be good. I have them all here in my rubber band.
Okay. So then, the rest of the agenda is before you, do we have a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as amended?
Make motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as amended.
Support.
Okay. We have a motion by Belliger and support by Otto. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Now we have an opportunity for call to the public. If you'd like to share something with us tonight, please come up to the microphone, make sure it's turned on, hold it up close to your mouth so that the people on TV can hear, and you have like about three minutes to speak on anything that's on your mind. And this is not a question and answer time, but we will certainly listen to what you have to say and see what we can do if you have some issues after the meeting. Okay, welcome.
I got a chance to reflect my time when I left.
Oh, Mr.?
I'm sorry, my name is Chad Marchant, and I live on 440 Barker Road. I got a chance to reflect on the way I presented myself to you guys and the things that I said, and I prayed a lot about it. And what God told me was pretty much that we elected you as the leadership of this town. And regardless of whether you call it Northfield Township or Woodmore Lake, you're still the leaders. The Bible says that we are supposed to control our tongue, seek a good reputation, and respect those that Jesus has placed as leaders. As a Christian and someone who believes that you should be the change you want to see, at that moment in time, I became a hypocrite, and I failed my own standards of impacting people in the surrounding communities. I am, at that time, I was unprofessional and personally disrespected each one of you. I'm standing here today to apologize for my actions and to apologize to each one of you for the way I presented myself and how I approached you. With that said, I would like to also invest my time into the community, so please let me think, because I know that you have to be the change you want to see, that you can't depend on other people to do it. If you see something, you have to do it. Please let me know some things I can do to create change and growth in our community. Thank you, Marlene, again, for answering my email about the easements, and I look forward to being part of the charge to grow the community and impact the people in the community. Thank you, guys, and I apologize for my actions last time.
Thank you, Mr. Marchant.
I accept, I accept.
Thank you. Me too.
And we've all been there.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, and I do accept also.
Hi, Lynn Lyman, 134 Lakeview Drive. I wanted to acknowledge the receipt of Mr. Ayers' response to the email where I had outlined several questions regarding the transition from Lakeview Drive, one word, to Lakeview Ave, two words. And I know you said this isn't really time for questions, but I guess I'd like to understand then, where do I go to get questions answered? The letters, the response that Mr. Ayers sent said that some people were using two words, Lakeview Ave. Like I said, I've lived in that neighborhood for fifty, over fifty years, it's always been Lakeview Drive, but, and then another part says that we had asked about the, having some type of documentation for changing the addresses, and he said that the legal plan is sufficient, but how do I, how do I notify the federal government? Like, what's gonna happen with my income taxes and property, well, you guys do property taxes, but, like, the state of Michigan, the IRS, like, how, how are they gonna know about this address change? And then also, the post office, you said that the assessor's office notifies the post office, but you didn't say that they have notified. So at what point, and will the post office continue to deliver to both addresses? Or at what point does everything have to be transitioned over? Can I wait until my driver's license expires? Or do I have to go to the Secretary of State this week and get it done? So, I can appreciate that someone was trying to correct an error in the playoff map, that the assessor, you know, felt the need that that was an important correction to make. I just still don't think that they considered the implications and ramifications on the lives of the people that live on that street. So, I'm worried about missing bills that don't come to the right address anymore. So, all of those things, like, and also, Mr. Ayers, I appreciate that you put the response in a letter, and I would ask that you sign a copy of the letter, so I have a signed copy. And, are you Mr. Burns?
I am.
You were CC'd on the letter, would you also sign the letter? Just for, like I say, I don't know what kind of proof I'm gonna need to get all these addresses changed. I mean, this is mortgages, deeds, titles, car insurance, car loans, bank accounts. I have no idea how hard this is gonna be.
Okay. Ms. Otto, you would have a quick response?
Yeah, so I'm gonna just give you a quick response. I basically live at St. Andrews Drive. On our deed, it is called St. Andrews Court Lot 36. I do not use that in my bills, I do not use it on my checking account, I do not use that for my IRS, I do not use that in my license, driver's license, I don't use it on anything. But still, that is the legal document of the deed, says Lot 36.
But what does the post office deliver to? If the post office notified that-
They deliver to St. Andrews Drive. And it's, and it's defined as the St. Andrews Court. I do not live in a court, I live on a drive. The street sign says drive, everything says one thing, the plot deed says something else. I have never, I've lived there for fifteen years and never had any problems. My mortgage is under drive, my, the IRS taxes, trust me, the IRS will find you if they want to, is under drive, everything is under drive.
Okay. Okay. So, but if the post office always has delivered that, then they've always delivered that? We are not-
I get some things on court, I get some things on drive. If you go to Google Map, it says I live on St. Andrews Court.
Okay. Even if you put in, if you tell somebody your address to find your home?
Uh huh, it'll come up, St. Andrews Court.
Even if they put in drive?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm worried about nothing then, but this seems like a pretty big deal.
And I'm not the only one, I think Janet has, we live in the same subdivision, we have the same problem.
Okay. So, I would recommend you actually make an appointment and, you know, make a list of all of the things that you need to change, and, you know, perhaps we can help with the different, some of them, but I know some of them you're probably gonna have to deal with yourself, you know? Get a change of address on the back of your driver's license, or, that's, that's free. So, anyway, make a list and we'll have-
I think the Secretary of State was free.
And we'll, you know, and, and you can make an appointment, and we can continue to explore this, but I don't think there's gonna be a change to, to what has already been done.
Right, and I understand that.
Thank you.
It's more now the ramifications and how I go about making any of the changes that are necessary to make sure that my mail gets delivered and my bills get paid and my cars are registered, and when I sell my house, or the mortgage that I'm paying, they aren't saying, oh, that's not the house you're paying for. All those things.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm sure you'd be able to make an appointment with Mr. Ains, and I'd be happy to attend also. Okay, do we have anyone else?
Yeah, my name is Steve Lyman, Steve Lyman, I just have a comment from Ms. Otto, is, when is the assessor gonna change your street name? Because they're told us in a letter that we have to change the street signs.
Oh, they probably, they probably have. I, that's the association's issue.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak at this point?
Hello, Board, Dave Gordon, 5558 Hellin Road. I don't really know how to proceed. I'd kinda like to encourage you to review medical marijuana, and it seems to me that the Board at this point in time is taking kind of a, we're gonna sit back and see what happens attitude and not proactively do anything before the December 15th deadline, which in effect would mean our community would not be participating in any provisioning centers. I think medical marijuana is, is important in a number of ways, and that ways, the first one is that it's a personal liberty issue. I don't think it's the government's role to tell us what we can do, or which drugs we can take. As long as what we're doing is not impacting other people, why is it the government's job to regulate what we do? It's my body. It's not the government's job to tell me what to do with it. I think it's an overreach in the extreme. The war on drugs started when I was a kid, when I was a teenager. I think most of you were, except for Tom, who's much younger, in the same boat, and Kathleen. Anyway, I'm older than a lot of you. We've been losing that war for fifty years. It was designed, based on what we now know from Nixon's secret tapes, it was designed to put his political enemies in jail. That's why he started the war on drugs extremely cynically, and it's been very successful in putting a lot of people in jail, but it hasn't accomplished much of anything else. I've been to a provisioning center, there aren't a bunch of kids sitting in the parking lot smoking pot and getting high. What there are is a lot of senior citizens, veterans, and people that are suffering from Cannabis can help, it's been proven, the medical science is there. One of the medical acknowledged uses of medical marijuana is to treat nausea associated with chemotherapy. It seems particularly insensitive to suggest that people experiencing extreme nausea should be required to travel to a different city or township where the politicians are more receptive to this, in order to maintain, to get medication. Keep in mind that unlike other medications, patients are not able to simply send a family member or a friend to pick up their medication. Logically, it's hard to reconcile a decision that does not facilitate relief in every way possible for our residents who have serious medical conditions. These patients with cancer and other ailments should be supported in every way possible. I think the decision to opt out of providing local access to medical marijuana is a heartless decision. There are simply no good reasons not to allow this service to be established in our township. It's good for our residents who are suffering, it's good for business in general, and it's good for our image as a community that cares. I have right here a list of, there's thirty different ailments here and diseases that it's been shown medical marijuana helps, from ADHD for kids, autism, all types of cancer, diabetes, depression, epilepsy, herpes, hiccups, migraines, MS, nausea, Parkinson's, PTSD. This is something we should be moving forward on, not, not sitting on our laurels and not doing anything. There's a website here that you can access that has multiple articles on all of these different ailments and medical studies that have been done in them. And I would encourage you, as our township leaders, to take a lead, take the lead on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there enough for everybody, Mr. Gordon? Yes? Okay. Okay. That's, that's for Steve, too. One more. Okay. That's for Steve. Okay. Thank you. Seeing no one else at this point, we'll move on to Board Member comments. Do any of the members of the Board would like to address anything at this point? Mr. Dockett?
I would like to say I agree with Mr. Gordon on the medical marijuana. It's as legal as aspirin, folks, I've said that before. I don't use it, but if somebody wants to use it, far be it from me to stop them. And the lady on Seven, on Horseshoe Lake with the address problem, it's too bad that our assessor turned a dent to the county in the first place. So, I, I think we should, I know that it's private roads down there, we don't have anything to do with the roads. I wish we would have left it alone, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dockett. Ms. Belliger, you had a comment?
Well, I wanna address, some people are getting their absentee voter ballots, there's a millage, Prop 1. I advise that we, I advise that people vote no on this millage, for the reason that it is probably going to be very much likely to be legal challenges if it passes, because of the refund provision in this millage regarding the police departments results in a non-uniform taxation. And evidently, this is illegal, and there's gonna be some, some, I guess, some, some movement in this direction regarding this. So, another thing is that supposedly purpose is not adequately stated, and I guess if you run a millage, you have to actually define the purpose for the monies and so forth. So I've been informed that this is probably gonna be, matter of fact, I've been promised that this is gonna be challenged if this does pass, so it might be good to let Washtenaw County take another stab at doing it properly. And just wanna take a quick note and mention the donations for the township, I'm happy to see that people are helping out and donating to things of their interest. You have Parks and Rec has received a hundred, the Non-Motorized Path, a little over two thousand, Senior Center, over five hundred, and Dog Park, two hundred and fifty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments by Board members? Okay, Ms. Zelnak.
Just a couple of comments. One is, when I've been in town, people have been talking about the issues people are having to approve businesses. I just want people to know that the processes have been in place for a while, as well as the planner and the, the building department. We haven't made any changes since we've been elected. It has been brought to our attention, and I think in our retreat, we've all said that we need to look into this and see if it can be streamlined. So, I, we are hearing the voices, and I expect that we will be looking into it and making recommendations of potentially changing, if we think that's necessary, or keeping it the same because we think it's best in class. The next is the street change. I know that the information was sent to the association, and maybe going, next time that a street change, and I hear that Potentially Shady Beach, as well as Greenland, might have changes coming, is that maybe we need to do a different method of communication to ensure that the residents are aware and hear their comments, even though I'm not sure there's much we can do if it's incorrect. But just to give a notice and go forward, maybe the communication needs to be slightly improved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I can, I can say that we have had some discussion, if you see my supervisor report later, there's, there's been some discussion about improving our processes, and so we're continuing to look into that, and Mr. Ains has been very proactive in taking a look at our website and our processes. So, I have great confidence that we're gonna be able to do a better job of moving things along in the future and at less cost, potentially, and so, just stay tuned. Any other comments? Ms. Otto?
I do know that in regards to the processes for new businesses, Janet did bring it towards the Planning Commission and did let them know that they were, they were charged with coming up with a proposal.
Yep. Okay.
I'd like to say we talked about this at the retreat, and we've just been kicking the can down the road, we, we really need to put it on the agenda and get it taken care of. I agree with Lenore. Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel inclined to comment as well, we did have a very good retreat, and we did assign, as Lenore brought up, this is a serious issue, and we have the assistance of the manager to help us with this, and we all, as a Board, agreed that this is something that we're gonna work together on and streamline and improve.
Soon.
Soon, like now. It's happening already.
All right, next item is correspondence and announcements, so there's a, a letter in here from Tetra Tech about the Non-Motorized Path, and just a summary, if there are no comments, we'll just move on to the next reports.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to make a comment on that. It says it was $336,000 for the last part, plus, plus they add 15% contingency on there. Then, when we, now all of a sudden, it's, it's supposed to be like down by 17% or something, but don't forget, we, we added 15% for the contingency, so I don't think that there's much savings here. Thank you.
I have to say that that's not true, that we did not have the 15% added on to the $336,000, it was just for our planning purposes. So, we actually did save $23,108 from the construction costs, so-
We always add a contingency on the construction, so don't give me that crap.
So, anyway, we will move on to the next item.
When, when was the last time we had a bid that we didn't add contingency on? Never, that I can remember.
The next item is the ZBA report, Ms. Otto, do you have anything to share? Oh, you passed out.
Yes, I did pass out the minutes to the last, draft minutes to the last meeting on September 18th. It was Case JZBA 17004, and they were requesting a variance in regards to a private road and driveway regulations. The construction was a 15-foot wide, 1,365 feet long gravel driveway, and it was approved. Our next meeting is on October, the next meeting actually is next Monday.
Planning Commission report, Ms. Chick is not here tonight, so there will be no report. Parks and Rec?
Nothing to report, however, our next meeting will be next Thursday, here downstairs in the conference room at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you. Land Preservation Committee, has there been a meeting?
Our next meeting is this Thursday. If the bylaws, any changes to the bylaws could be given to us so that we can incorporate them, that would be great. Thank you.
Financial Treasurers report. Anyone have any questions on that for Ms. Zelnak?
Yeah, I think I do.
Okay.
Number one question is, what about the $1,700 per month that we get for the antenna tower that we talked about, that we were going to put that aside as we do the rental from 75 Barker? On the bottom of the, a little bit to the right of center, it says rental income 75 Barker, $9,660 bucks, $9,960. But I don't see anything about the antenna, where is that at? Or, I mean, I, I guess, I didn't mean to say that. How can we get it in here so we can see it, you know, monthly?
Um, I, yes, I believe, since that is a request from the Board, we'll make it happen.
And, and, okay. And how about the fund balance? I don't see it in here either.
Yes, thank you for bringing that to our attention. So we have quite a few reports that we put in the Board, and I think going forward for the preparation of the packages-
I can't hear you.
So we have quite a few reports that we do for the Board, so I, I believe going forward, since we've missed a couple meetings ago, the donation report, and we have now missed the fund balance report, I think creating a list, and when the Board packages are assembled, I would ask Ms. Chockley and Mr. Ains to ensure that, if they would, check it off to make sure those reports are in there. I think that would help us not miss one. So, yes, it's, it is not in your Board package. So I think, again, a solution would be to have a list, and as the packages are assembled, to make sure that is incorporated.
Last, last question, what is the fund balance, do you know? I mean, offhand, or?
I, if we look, I did not look at that, I'm-
Well, I'm, I'm interested in those three things.
Yep.
I'd like to be able to find without, without going through all this.
Understand.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I would just make one comment, and the Treasurers' report, you have seen that we are diversifying some of-
In the Treasurers' report, you have seen that we are diversifying some of our investments. So, we made some investments with Morgan Stanley for the wastewater treatment plant, as well as for MIF, and really, it's investing the funds that will be used for the fire truck. So, we have basically $522,000 that we invested in for the wastewater treatment plant and $478,000 for the fire truck. It was invested in such a way that everything is covered for the FDIC insurance.
Thank you. I do want to mention that some of these, you know, we need an amendment, actually, to our budget, and that will be coming up, I don't know, in the next month or two, because we are, there's some changes that we wanted to make to actually set aside that, those funds specifically for Barker Road. And I don't know that we've actually officially established that fund yet.
We did vote on it.
We did vote on it, and we want to do that. I think we...
I can't hear you.
We want to do that. We just need to have the official resolution for the board to actually establish that. So, it will happen.
It says it was $900, almost $10,000.
That's good.
That's being done.
And the fees from the cell tower, seems to me that's moving over to the fire department fund, so that's not going to show up in the general fund anymore, is it, Mr. Wagner?
No, I think, when the board approved the budget, that was going to be pulled out into a separate fund. And I actually asked Ms. Patrick about this, and she had said that after the audit was done, that she would be setting these funds up. So, she was preparing to get ready for the audit, and then she, I'm sure if you tell her to do it sooner than that, she certainly will, but I think that was her plan.
Yeah, and the audit's starting relatively soon.
I asked her to.
Yep. And if I may make an, maybe until we set that up, what we might be able, or should be able to do is show the different balances in the account. So, it may be driven by account, but we should be able to give you that information.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, one other, while we're talking, just mentioning the rental income at Barker, maybe since they have a little bit of income in there, possibly could spiff it up a little maybe with a paint job? Maybe get some bids for a professional paint job on the building, possibly?
If you make that, I would second that, because the paint, the paint has fallen off the building. It really looks bad. And if we got $10,000, I'm sure we could paint that building for $10,000.
Or probably less.
Probably less, but it needs to have a proper prep. And I think the prep job on it was terrible last time, and that's why the paint's fallen off.
I talked with, go ahead.
Should I, can I make a motion that we get some bids for proper prepping, like scraping and power washing and prepping the building for a professional paint job? And paint jobs?
Well, I would include the paint job as well.
Yes, include paint job as well, yes. That was in there, I was getting there. I was working my way there. Thank you, Jackie.
So, my only question is, is that the highest priority on that building where we would need to spend funds? And, I mean, that's my only question.
Well, it's looking bad for you.
It looks bad, I know, but...
Well, I think you have to look at it this way. If we are going around telling other property owners that they have to remove blight, we should be examples of it. So, our own township building should not show blight.
Right, but we have broken windows. We need windows replaced, we need the doors replaced. So, there's multiple needs in that building. If we're going to get, if we're going to understand the full ramifications, we should just get numbers for all of those things.
Get started.
Get started, I agree.
Why don't we start with, let's get a to-do list for Barker Road, and then maybe address it next meeting and be like, okay, this is priority and need bids on. But get a to-do list first.
Yeah, I think so.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Sure, there are broken windows.
Yeah, the top floor.
And the bottom floor.
Shall we make a motion to get a to-do list for the Barker, Certified Barker?
I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Ains can...
Without a motion?
Plan. Plan on that building. I do want to mention here, under the state revenue sharing, state shared revenue on the financial report, that I believe that $1,000, no, $118,063 should be allocated to last year. It comes in late, and then, but it's for last fiscal year. So, that's why the discrepancy between the end balance of 2017, 6/30/2017, and then our original budget for this year is so much different. The $118,63 is a payment that should be applied to our last fiscal year. And I've talked to Ms. Patrick about it, so I think it was just an oversight we could take a look at again.
I think that we need you to make that proposal for that building, because nothing's going to happen if you don't.
Should I go back to make a motion that we at least make a to-do list for Certified Barker?
Okay, we have a motion by...
For Steve to do it.
For Steve to do it.
Yes, let's make a motion for the manager, Mr. Ains, to please assemble a to-do list for 75 Barker.
I'll support.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Bellinger and a support by Ms. Otto. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, we can move on, I think, from the financial reports. Does anyone else have any questions of them? Okay, next item is supervisor reports. I don't have anything to add unless people have questions. Mr. Dockett?
I'm very curious. Oh, the 200 car park, is that on the north side or the south side of Eight Mile?
It will be...
I mean, is it towards Brighton or towards Ann Arbor?
It's towards Ann Arbor.
So, it's in our township?
I'm not sure that they have the exact plot of land designated yet, but it should be south of Eight Mile and west of US 23.
Yeah, south of Eight Mile, yes. Well, that's Mr. Lefebvre's property.
It is.
Okay, thank you. I just, I mean, I was curious when I seen that in here, but there was no, no address, I don't know.
I don't know that they've actually picked the actual plot of it, and...
Well, how do you know about it? I mean...
Because I attend the Wasna area transportation study meetings, and we have an MDOT representative there, so...
Is this going to happen sooner?
Next year, they're going to build it, 2018. It's on their, it's on their plan, and their money is set aside for that.
Could we get a copy of the plan if it's?
I don't...
I'd like to see where it is.
Well, I don't know that they actually know, and they haven't designed it yet, but...
Oh, they don't have a plan?
Well, they do, but they haven't...
Okay, thank you.
Identified the particular parts, okay.
Marlene, they also, when they started on the construction on 23, when they took the one down on North Territorial, they did promise us to have one in somewhere within the township.
Right, yeah. And there's an intention to have a high-end coach bus to run. At some point, anyway, they're thinking of that, running from Eight Mile all the way into Ann Arbor. So, that will help alleviate some parking issues in Ann Arbor. And I think it'll be helpful for us in our downtown area to have something that close, where people may want to stop and have dinner on their way home from work. So, anyway, all right. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Ains, it's your turn.
Thank you. You had authorized at a prior meeting the purchase of items with the $5,000 grant from the county health department. And we've made the purchases. I put in the lobby, or actually had Dan put in the lobby, a couple of picnic tables we bought, so you could see an example of that. And also, from the senior community center, we've got one of the little serving trays, rather than have the director bring a sink and a few other heavy things down. And then Dan is getting the pump for the community garden. So, those are all tied together, and tomorrow I'm supposed to submit to the county an itemized invoice so they can reimburse us. It may come in a bit lower than 5,000 because some of my staff was innovative and checked out where they could get bargains, so it may not be that exact number. But in any case, we ended up with about six picnic tables, I think three folding tables for the center and the pump, and a number of items dealing with the serving of food at the center. So, I think you'll be pleased when you see those put in effect. Also, the picnic tables are folding ones, so Dan tells me they're light, and they can be moved around the community as we have need for them. So, that was part of what we were looking at as well. The road commission has been working on the East Shore Drive project for about the last week. I did drive it before the meeting today. It is open to the public, it is striped, it is down. So, to me, it looks like it's finished, but they may have a little bit of cleanup, but that should be a lot better. And that finishes that side for the county. In addition to that, I had looked at the website, as was mentioned. I also had looked at some of the other websites on how to present ourselves, and I found a brochure, happened to be Garden City, because that's where I live, and I was looking. But this one was put together, it's called "Seven Steps for Opening a New Business in the Community." It's very simple. The second page is just addresses, phone numbers. But we did talk to our planner with McKenna today about this, and he's also going to be looking at another, a number of other items, different ways to speed the process up, simplify it. There may be some things that will require changes in the zoning ordinance, but a lot of things can just be done by making changes in procedures. And we also want to get more information in a simplified form. When I went on the website, I found that, yes, they did have a list of fees, but they had three different lists of fees in three different locations. And they had a whole lot of other things. So, I think anybody going on there would tend to get confused. I had the whole conference table covered with handouts I had printed out from the website, dealing with planning and zoning and getting a permit and so forth. So, I think it's just not organized right, and it's a bit too complicated. So, we will be working further on that. In addition, we've been handling some of the complaints since the zoning officers left, and I did talk to several people in the last several days. So, that's another reason why the earlier complaint, I hadn't completed by Friday. But I am trying to fill in as I have opportunity to do so. And that's all my report, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next, the first agenda item is the SAW grant approval.
I have a question.
Oh, you do, okay, go ahead, Mr. Dockett.
I should know this, but I don't. But people ask me about, how did we get East Shore done? Did we pay for that, or did the county pay for the, from Maine to East Shore? I mean, Seven Mile, or how, or what happened there?
Well, the signage says it was paid for by the road commission, but I don't know if there was also some money from the community or not. I wasn't here at the time that was started.
I don't remember either.
Yeah, that was, was it last year?
It was a millage that was passed.
Yeah.
Oh.
Right.
I actually think that we kicked in, the township kicked in money for that.
The township what?
I think the township kicked in money for the...
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Last year I thought it was. Yeah.
It was a millage. It's the county went forward to get a millage to do all the Road A, Class A roads, all, some of the paved, and that was part of that.
Yeah, but when we meet with them every year, parts of it, we have to give a certain portion towards that as a township. It didn't happen last year, it was the year before that we did it. I thought that we did it.
I don't recall that.
Because we were pushing for East Shore for...
Well, when they, when they did it originally, they mucked it up so bad that, I mean, they brought in a hot load and put in there and all. So, they, you know, we've been after them ever since they did it.
Yeah, I do know the last board we were after, I'm constantly to get that fixed.
I thought it, I mean, in their presentation, they did...
So, we don't know.
I believe, we can look at the presentation they did. It's my understanding it was a millage driven. There's a millage to do, they paved roads, and this was part of that. I think there was another one, too, or one coming up next year.
Right, they have schedules, and they're all over.
I was understanding it's more like the schedule. We just happen to be on schedule for them to do Seven Mile, part of Seven Mile, and then the East Shore Drive. That's what we heard at the meeting here this year.
They usually don't do anything for nothing.
I think it was a millage by the people that was passed last year.
Thank you.
Okay, are you ready, Mr. Rubel?
I'm ready.
Okay, make sure you get the microphone wherever you're standing. You can carry it with you.
So, I'm going to talk about the asset management plan for the sewer and the wastewater treatment plant. We'll go through... Just as a way of background, there's no doubt in my mind that your sewer and your wastewater system is your most valuable asset, dollar-wise. Your major assets there, you have a wastewater treatment plant, has a capacity of about 1.3 million gallons per day. You have 15 pump stations in your system, and you have about 45 miles of sewer pipe. So, you could essentially stretch your sewer from here to Toledo, maybe? And so, you have a significant amount of sewer. And I don't know exactly the value. Part of the plan would be to put a value on your system, but based on other systems of this size, I think your wastewater system has a value between 40 and 60 million dollars. Significant, significant asset that you have. So, we'll talk about managing that asset through the presentation today. So, we talked already about the wastewater system. We'll talk about what an asset management plan is, give you some, an overview of it, some of the steps. We'll talk about funding an asset management plan, the budget for it, and the funding opportunity that is at your doorstep right now, so... So, asset management plans really are a national type of initiative. The thinking is that we all own automobiles, and the automobile comes with an owner's manual. It tells you when to change the oil, and when to change the tires, when to change the windshield wipers. You don't have that manual with a sewer system or a wastewater plant. And the thinking is that if you have that kind of a manual put together, it'll allow you to make better decisions about managing that asset, investing the right sum of money at the right time to keep it at its maximum extent. So, it's a national initiative. EPA is promoting this on the national level. The state of Michigan is requiring these plans as part of the permit to operate the wastewater plant. So, they issue you a permit that allows you to discharge the water to, in your case, Horseshoe Lake Drain, and they have made the development of the plan a requirement of that permit. It's written right in there to do this plan. If you need a low-interest loan in the future, having this plan is a requirement as well. You can't get access to these low-interest loans without having the plan to maintain the asset. Lots of other reasons for the plan. Many communities find that just having the plan allows them to operate the system better. It allows them to defend themselves should there be a backup, some sort of a claim against them. They have the plan, they maintain the system, they're in a better position to defend those claims. So, the goal is to manage the system, to have the information that allows you to make good decisions on management. It'll allow you to understand what the needs are, and I'll go through some examples of that. If you understand what your needs are, you can understand how much money to raise through your rates to maintain the system, and then you can invest that in the right way at the right times. Many components to this plan, it has many sections. Some of these I put together about this thick, all these tabs, and these are really the tabs that are in that report. They require you to look at the staffing that you have at the plant. Do you have the right staffing at the plant? And we'll talk, we've already done that, actually, for your plant, and we can talk about that. It requires you to have a really good map of your system. That's really the first part of managing it, is to know where everything is. And we have actually done that, too, in the recent past. And I'm really glad that you have done that. It's helped both Dan and I with some of our projects, so... Then the third step is really where the big investment is, is inventorying and assessing the conditions. So, it's preparing a list of every piece of sewer that you have in the system, all 45 miles of it. And we'll make a list of every manhole. And we'll make a list of every manhole, and we'll visit every manhole, and we'll look at it and see if it is in good shape or it needs some rehabilitation. Likewise, all the pump stations, we'll inventory all of those valves, pipes, so forth, and every piece of equipment at the wastewater plant, all the pumps and pipes and tanks will be looked at and evaluated and listed. Then, once you do all that, we'll score, we'll score the assets from high priority to low priority. And that will allow you then to prioritize where you need to put the money to operate and maintain it. And then that will, that will produce a plan. So you'll have a year-by-year plan, probably over 20 years, that's really what your permit requires. So you'll know each year what the plan is. The plan will change, but at least you've got somewhere to start. If you have that plan together, then you'll know what your rate should be to implement the plan. And the state requires, it's written in the permit, that you update them every year on how you're doing with the plan. Did you do what you set out to do at the beginning of the year, or did you have to juggle things around? They just want to track that. Communities are working on it, because there are communities out there that do very little until a disaster occurs. Maybe the Fraser Sinkhole that we've all seen on TV, that might be a good example. This is just kind of another way to organize all those tasks. So at the center is the Asset Management Plan, and all sorts of things feed into it. We'll interview Mr. Willis's staff about their experience with equipment. We'll look at developing software tools that will allow us to feed data into here. The rates are linked to the plan. If the plan has a lot of projects, the rates are affected. But the end result is a plan, a year-by-year plan to manage your system. And there's a lot of math that goes into the plans, that's not my intention to go through all that math tonight, but the key points is, we look at what happens if this asset were to fail? If the pump were to not operate tomorrow, what would happen? If there are three pumps in that pump station, probably not a lot, but if there's only one, that's a big deal. So we look at both the consequence of failure, and we look at the probability of failure. So a brand-new asset, a brand-new pump, is very unlikely to fail anytime soon. But a 20- or 30-year-old pump is probably on its last legs and would have a high probability to fail. So we look at those two things, how important is it, and what's the likelihood of it failing? And we use mathematics then to give it a score. We combine those two things to give it a score. And we'll score every asset on these plans. So to develop a plan requires quite a bit of legwork to do it, and there are some optional things, and you don't have to do all these things. Different communities do various levels of analysis. Some very simple, some medium, and some high-end. And this table gives a range, then, of what to expect on the various systems. So the inventory and assessment is really, really the biggest task, going out, looking at all these assets out in the field, every manhole, every sewer pipe, and then mapping them, keeping track of them. The rate analysis is important, but it's a small cost. The report compiling it all is a fairly significant effort. Software to manage it is part of that, I called it GIS here, but there's actually, it can be even more than that. It can be very sophisticated databases and so forth. And then we've talked about this in the spring when we did the flow monitoring. We said that that was an eligible expense, and it is. So that is part of asset management planning. And the original plan that was proposed a few years ago included even more monitoring than we did this spring. So you can do more of that as part of the plan. So there's a range of costs there, and we'll talk about the grant and how much you have coming to the township in a second. So this plan was actually required in your permit to be done in 2015. So it was required two years ago to be done. When Mr. Hardesty got that requirement, he and I talked about it, and we said, well, why don't we push back at the state on that? Because we know you're in the queue for this grant. Why would they make you spend tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars in 2015 if they had put you in line for a grant in 2017? So we wrote a letter, and I'm pleased to report that you were successful in getting that deferred. So they pushed that back to 2020. They were, they were quite helpful in that regard. But Mr. Willis has actually been working on pieces of the plan for the last three or four years. We provided him some forms, so as he's done some of the work out in the field, he's been keeping good records of that. And the grant actually allows all the work from 20, end of 2013 on, to be reimbursed. So all of his time, the last three years, associated with this, you can get reimbursed retroactively for that. So that's a good thing. All right, so the funding, so that's kind of the basics of what the plan's about. And we applied for that grant in 2013. And you've recently been notified that you're going to get those funds this fall. I think the state's been waiting for the new state fiscal year, October 1, so I expect you to get a letter any day now from the state asking you to sign the contract and return it. They don't give you much time, only give you two or three weeks to turn that around, but that'll be your official notification then that the funds are coming. They call that grant program the Saw Grant. It stands for, S stands for stormwater, A stands for asset management, and W stands for wastewater. So that's their fancy acronym for the grant. So some communities are, especially municipalities that have a storm sewer system, can also apply for stormwater funds to do a stormwater plan. Township doesn't own much stormwater infrastructure, so wasn't really a need to do that. So yours is really the A and the W. The grant is administered by the state of Michigan, the DEQ in particular, Department of Environmental Quality, administers the grant. It has a 10% match to it, but that can be in-kind services. So I think the township easily would be able to meet the match with labor at the wastewater plant. And in fact, the proposal, the application had about 15% or 20% township labor. So actually, you would make money by doing the grant. You would actually make more than you would, you would spend. So in 2013, I, we have helped, we helped dozens of communities with these applications. I was in front of you, the board at the time, in 2013. I brought that to Mr. Hardesty and Mr. Fink's attention. They asked that I bring it to the board's attention, and the board unanimously approved that application. So you, you applied in 2013. I did do that at no cost to the township, that application. 19 communities paid me, but I did Northfields for free, so. The DEQ got 660 applications in 2013. They could not administer the full load all at once. So they have been releasing about 100 communities a year for these funds. So that's why it took four years to get to this point, you just happened to be in the fourth stage. It wasn't by criteria, it was strictly by a random lottery, so to speak, when, when you qualify. And you're going to qualify this fall. And we've gotten a letter, both myself and Mr. Ains has got, have gotten that letter stating you'll be getting your contract very soon, so. That's all I had on the program. I'd love to answer questions, because I think that will be part of Mr. Willis and Mr. Ains's future the next few years to perceive what that grant should, should you sign the contract.
Any questions for Mr. Rubel? Ms. Bellinger.
I got a few questions, I guess in reverse order. What does NPDES?
Yes, that stands for National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System.
Okay. Saw Grants administered by the state of Michigan, do you know how they obtain their money through what form of taxation or so forth? Do they, does the state gather the money to use?
I know a little bit about that. In the late 90s, there was a referendum by the voters of Michigan to borrow $1 billion for environmental programs, and this money comes from that authorization. They borrowed it in 98 and have kept it in the bank and decided that, the legislature decided that's how they wanted to spend that money, is give it to the communities.
Borrowed from, we don't know where?
I do not know who loaned the money. Yeah, I think it was market bonds of some sort.
All right, another few questions. That's software. You actually answered some of the questions I had, because I, checking the equipment is a routine already performed by our professionals, wastewater treatment employees. Do we have consumables, maybe, maybe you or Dan would know, consumables and storage? Do we have pumps, backup pumps and storage for the occasional issues that do crop up?
We, years ago, we standardized some of the pump stations, and we have, each pump station has two pumps. And we have spare pumps that will operate probably in eight or 10 of this pump station, because they're all the same. And all our pump stations have redundant pumps, and the control panels on all the pump stations work the same, so we can carry fewer parts and service all the pump stations. We did this 10, 15 years ago. So we've been working on this for quite a while.
Thank you. That's, that's good to hear, the streamlining, and you've already been working hard on this already. This grant, I had other questions regarding that. Does any part of this grant apply towards pipes or pumps, or a basin, or things of this nature, physicals?
Construction dollars?
Yeah, tangibles or construction?
The application that you submitted does not do that, it was just for planning purposes.
Okay, there's another thing, you said this, something of this nature is a requirement for a permit that we already have?
That is correct.
This is the state of Michigan requires what exactly, the asset management plan?
They require a plan, a report.
A type of report. And this report can be done by anybody, pretty much, I mean, any, I mean, by your business, your company, or even, does, can the township generate a report? Is it feasible, is this something some people do?
I do not know of any community that is doing their own report.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Not saying it can't be done, I don't know of any that are doing it.
Okay, that's, that's fair, I just was curious, because, you know, I don't know, I don't operate a wastewater treatment plant, so I don't really know. Okay, I think that's it for the moment, if I come up with other questions, I'll be sure and give you a holler, thank you.
Happy to, yeah, Steve and I talked quite a bit about it, so.
Ms. Otto.
On slide 10, you talked about the asset management approximate costs, and then there was the inventory and asset, a cost to it. We did, didn't we do audits a couple of years ago? And wouldn't that inventory and assessment, wouldn't the audits come under that? Or were we planning to do an audit of the source?
The only audit I'm aware of is audit of connections.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, this, and this audit would actually be the physical assets, the, every pipe, every manhole.
Okay.
The audit from before was strictly number of bills that you have, number of commitments of our users. Number of homes connected.
Okay, that's what I wanted, no, and that has nothing to do with this?
Very tangentially related, not, that's not a core of this.
Okay.
Anyone else, Mr. Dockett?
I think we have a storm sewer in Northfield Township. We've got manholes all over, so.
The township owns a little bit of storm sewer at this building. Most of the other storm sewer the road commission maintains.
Okay, well, but we, yeah, but we do have storm sewer all over East Shore, all over Main Street, up, uptown, across from the Bowen Alley, it's a single lot, and it all goes down into the lake.
And my understanding is the road commission owns and maintains that.
Okay. The Saw Grant wastewater management plan, this grant is for $600,000 in round figures. Matching funds would be $60,000. Where's that money coming from?
I could address that. The matching part is what he was referring to, that the, the time and labor and supplies that the wastewater plant has been doing for a couple of years in these various things. Any of that can count towards this match. So I'm waiting for Dan to complete his analysis of how much that is. If that's not sufficient, then any engineering you've spent in the past on this plan could count as something that would be reimbursed for, or would count as our match. And I understand that there's been, what was it, 20,000 or so worth of engineering?
Thirty, maybe?
Maybe 30,000, he said. So I don't think the match is going to be the issue.
Well, I think it is, so I'm just wondering where it's coming from, that's all.
Well...
I mean, where do we get the $60,000?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, you've already paid in the past about 30,000 to the engineers.
Well, okay, can, do we know, do we, do we have these figures?
Yes.
So that this board can make a decision on this?
Yes, that would have to be documented.
Well, before we vote on this, I think we ought to know what it's going to cost us, and where the money's coming from.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
Yes, well, between what you paid in the past to the engineers, and what you've paid in salaries and various supplies and materials to the wastewater treatment plant, it's my understanding you've fully met the match requirement already.
I think that's the question, will this be in the out-of-pocket, or have we already paid in a sense?
You've already paid it.
Okay, and we're fairly guaranteed of this? I mean, we really don't want to sign if it's going to cost us additional general fund?
No, the actual agreement, it's a contract between us and the state. And what he was referring to is, I received a call, and then I received the letters from DEQ saying that you had been awarded the grant. Originally, they were going to send it out in October, the paperwork. And then later, they got back to me and said it would probably be December when it came. But that would be a legal document, which we would have our attorneys review as well.
So you're saying by the time we get the legal document, we're going to have a, we'll know if we've actually covered through our prior work and services, the 10% match?
Yes, and Dan's working on his part of it. And in your past expenditures, it should be reflected in your past audits. It should show how much money you've paid in addition to the billing that you've had from them. So you should have it all before you end up signing the document.
May I? It also will cover work by the township the next three years. So even if you haven't already met it, the work that Mr. Willis and his staff will put in the next three years will count as well.
Now, can I reaffirm that you said this money is actually derived from a billion dollars that was borrowed by the state from somewhere, and they're actually using it? The, that billion dollars plus probably the interest they've gotten since 98 to assist?
That's my understanding, I'm not a financial expert. I do not track all the finances of the state of Michigan, but that is what they had communicated, yes.
That's what they told you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I will state, I, I think it will be fairly easy for the township to make, meet that match. Very, not many communities have the ability to televise their own sewer system. And you do, you have that equipment and a staff trained to do that. And that's a big chunk of this work, so you have an asset already that should help you a great deal. The ability to do that televising yourself will count very strongly towards that match. The ability to do that televising yourself will count very strongly towards that match.
And we're actually thinking that the amount for our people will exceed the match and therefore we will be submitting to the state for reimbursement of some of what would it normally be in your budget anyway?
Ms. Manley.
It kind of goes along with my question. So say if we've already spent 30,000 for engineering, we can basically expect to get that money back?
Yeah, the first month you can submit for that and get that right back.
So we really won't have to pay out anything in cash if anything, we're going to get monies back?
I think the way we have it laid out, you'll make money on the grant, or at least you'll retain more than you spent.
Over the last probably four years, we've been working on cleaning sewers and televising them. And our goal is to televise every sewer in the township within five to six years. And we're in year three of doing that. And we've probably assessed probably 75% of the manholes in the township so far. So all this work we should get reimbursed back for.
I noticed you used the word "should."
Well, I don't know how the state works, but that's, that's my understanding of it.
Ms. Zelenak.
So what happens if we weren't to take the grant? I mean, it sounds like from your presentation that we are obligated to have an asset management plan and that we would have to do it on our own.
That's my, that's my understanding as well.
That's what it sounds like to me, okay. And it also sounds like based on the conversation that the 60,000 approximate, we've already spent it and should get reimbursed and potentially even more?
That's my understanding, that's actually how I see the numbers, yes.
And then we have on, I think, page five, which I think is slide 10 maybe, we have this asset management approximate cost. So when do we determine, I mean, what items are required and when do we determine what items we would be doing?
Not too far. The inventory and assessment is required. It's just a matter of how much time you put into that. I would say this is a, it's a lot of money, but I'd say it's a middle level. I've seen communities do much more extensive and I've seen some do a very cursory effort in that regard.
And do we have, is this going to be a complete inventory redo? Or do we have some sort of inventory so that it's an update as opposed to a start from scratch?
You have a, you have a good map now, and that is an inventory in itself. I have to defer to Dan. I don't recall what his inventory of the wastewater equipment is, if he has that in a database somewhere or a spreadsheet?
There's a spreadsheet at the plant with most of that stuff on it.
Okay, so there's something to start with there. We would probably need to put more time into the condition of each of those than he does day in and day out. The rate update is required. The annual and final report is required. The GIS is optional, as it indicates there.
You said that GIS is a benefit to us to have?
Absolutely.
Because it's software that we could use?
They will pay you to, for the software.
Okay.
The grant will pay for that. The flow metering and modeling, that is optional.
So if we, basically if we look at your low end and high end, the high end exceeds the grant, so I take it we'll keep it within the grant limits?
Right.
Okay.
All you need to decide this fall is whether to take the 595 or not.
Okay.
And then you can figure out how to spend it. If you don't use it all, no big deal. You'll use 400,000 or whatever.
So the goal would be to use the 595 to, pretty much to a T?
Seems like it's free money to me. I don't like to give away free money.
Right, so that would be the goal and we would stay within that constraint and I take it people will monitor?
I think you can easily do that.
Okay, thank you.
The estimate that I see here is, you know, what kind of an estimate is that? It doubled, 322,000 to 637,000. I don't call that much of an estimate.
So the floor, the flow metering and modeling, I know we had that as an option, but I think in previous meetings, like probably several years ago, we talked about having that because of our flow metering problems today?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it would be of great value to you to have that. I would say most communities I work in now, it wasn't this way 15 years ago, I'd say most of them now do have a computer model that can be used to help answer growth questions and things like that. This would be a great opportunity to have one for 10 cents on the dollar.
We're still on number one, is that correct? We're not talking about number two yet.
Not yet. Okay, so number one. Did anyone, everyone get their questions answered? Ms. Bellinger?
I'd like to ask, anybody know anything more about this referendum in 1998 about the billion dollars that was borrowed by the state from an unknown source?
No. Okay, well, I don't know anything. So are we ready for a motion here at this point? Is everyone's question answered? Okay, I guess, does anyone else want to make the motion or do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. I move that we accept the grant, the SAW grant from the state of Michigan for, I can't find the amount, oh, for 595,385 dollars and authorize the township manager to sign the necessary documents. After our attorney approves them.
I'll support.
Okay, so motion by Chocly and support by Otto.
May we have a friendly amendment to put in the local match of 10%?
Okay, I accept that. So we will amend the motion to add?
I still move that.
Okay.
And I'll support that amendment.
Thank you.
Okay, do we need a restatement then of the motion?
Need a vote on the amendment.
Okay, we have a motion to add the local match of 10%. All in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
That was, okay, that was a motion by Zelenak and support by Otto. Okay, roll call vote then.
Ms. Zelenak?
Yes.
Belliger?
No.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Dockett?
No.
Chocly?
Did we get everybody? Okay, okay, all right. Okay, so the amendment adding the 10% was approved. So then the main motion by Chocly and supported by Otto was to accept this, approve acceptance of the SAW grant from the state of Michigan for 595,385 dollars with the local match being 10% and to authorize the township manager to sign the necessary documents upon approval by the attorney. Okay, roll call vote please.
Just a discussion.
Okay.
Again, it's my understanding based on this presentation, if we don't accept this grant, that we would have to do the items required without having any funding. So therefore, I'm voting yes, thank you.
Correct, yes, thank you. All right, so roll call vote, please.
Otto?
Yes.
What's this on?
We are voting to accept the SAW grant.
Oh, I thought we already did.
No, that was.
Amendment.
Amendment, yeah. That's okay.
What did we vote on?
Now we're vote, now we're voting to accept the SAW grant. The last thing we voted on was to add the, to stipulate that the match was 10%. Okay. Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Belliger?
No.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Dockett?
No.
Chocly?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, then. That passed. The next item on the agenda is to consider Tetra Tech's smart rate study proposal. And this has been on the agenda a couple of times before, but we didn't have as complete information at that time. And now it's coming before us again and we have the funding imminent. And so I think this would be important for us as we're looking to put out an RFP for the community center and we're looking at potential development in the township. So I will make a motion to have the board authorize the smart rate study by Tetra Tech.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion by Chocly and support by Otto. Now we can have discussion. Ms. Belliger?
Did we not have a study that from 2014 that was, that was of this nature? And did we not use part of that information to raise the hookup fees and so forth to move forward with that?
Yep.
I mean, I don't, just honestly, I mean, we know that we need a bigger plant if we're going to have expansion, so I'm kind of curious what value this would be.
Mr. Rubel, did you want to address that question?
Thanks.
Maybe doing it?
Well, through the last couple of studies we did on capital projects, either at the board meeting or afterwards, I kept getting asked the question, how does this affect our connection fee and how does this affect our rates? Those projects were not conceived in 2014 when the rate study was last done. So the only way to answer the question on how capital projects would impact fees or rates would be to update the rate study with looking at scenarios of capital projects. So this is what the study would do, would be look at those scenarios. It would also update the budgets to your current budget cycle, actual budget rather than those that were projected. So that's the big change.
Is that the end of your question, Ms. Belliger?
Sounds like a bunch of double talk to me.
Okay, I have Ms. Otto with her hand up.
So I can also support what Mr. Rubel said because in 2014, we didn't really do a rate study. We did what I call a feasibility study. We took rates from other townships and didn't we compare them to ours at that time? We didn't actually do what we're doing here.
Actually, we did it, we did do a complete rate study in 2014 and we compared it to other communities.
Okay, I already remember the comparison.
But there were no capital projects identified in 2014, so that would be the difference.
So what are the capital projects that we're talking about? Are you talking about the residential possible developments? I'm just curious, what do you mean by the capital?
Yeah, I've been up here several times talking about, in this board in particular, talking about the sewer, the trunk sewers and the need, should growth occur, the need to invest in the trunk sewers. The last board I presented on a storage tank at the wastewater plant, so. Again, this would not be committing to either of those capital projects. It would simply be understanding the impact of those on your fees and rates.
We need it. Mr. Dockett?
The taxpayers paid for a rate, rate study. The taxpayers, yeah, paid for the five-year rate study in 2014. Why are we asking for a new rate study in 2017 that the taxpayers will have to pay for? Now.
Okay.
There's about 20, just a minute.
No, I know.
There's 20 things in here that the township people have to do. I don't see much that Tetra Tech is doing. And it's going to cost $10,500. The township paid, the township, the Northville Township taxpayers paid for the five-year study. Now, I know there was an argument, but it was a five-year study. I was here in 2014, not three years ago, so now we're, you know. Is Tetra Tech asking Northville Township taxpayers to pay for a new rate study in 2017 at the cost of $10,500? This is just another gimme for Tetra Tech. This township board needs to do a job and get bids from these companies that do work for the taxpayers of Northville Township. The taxpayers have given millions of dollars, millions of no-bid contracts to Tetra Tech over the 60 years, millions of dollars. Didn't bid them, we just handed them, just like we handed this stuff to them tonight. We've given hundreds of thousands of dollars to Paul Burns over the last 10 years, no-bid contracts.
Can we stay on topic, Mr.?
We have given thousands and thousands of dollars to the auditor, no-bid contracts over the last 10 years. You know, it's just sickening that we're sitting here giving this money to these people that don't bid these jobs and we just keep handing it to them. I think that's very wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dockett. If we had raised the fees in 2014 that the study had indicated with just five taps, we would have recouped the $10,500.
We did, we did, we did.
They decided not to. So I turn, Mr. Dockett?
We raised the sewer rates.
Not the tap fees?
Yes, we did.
We did not raise the tap fee, $50, they raised it, $50 in 2014. And recently, we raised it to 5973, which was in that 2014 study. And so just four or five taps recoups the money that that rate study required us to do.
And isn't this rate study being paid for under the SAW grant?
This rate study would be paid for?
It's not by the taxpayers.
Correct.
And then, isn't it?
It's just a stepping stone for a million dollar deal.
Wait a minute, Ms. Manley is on deck. Go ahead, Ms. Manley.
And I do understand like Mr. Dockett saying, you know, we will be using the sewer treatment, you know, people for these things, but we will be reimbursed for that, right? Or it'll count towards our matching funds, correct?
Rate stu-
Not necessarily the rate study, but?
But anything that we use?
Anything that the township employees do.
Yes.
Okay.
And rate studies are brand out.
Right.
No, you said that this study slightly differs from the 2014 because we were not considering the actual expansion of lines or the ability of our infrastructure or whatnot. How are they different? You explained it briefly, I think.
I've explained it many times.
I mean, between the 14 study and what?
Yeah, the 14 study did not have any capital projects included in either the connection fee or the rates, so.
Prior to 14, we hadn't raised the rates in how many years, 20?
I think we did it in 2010, but prior to that, it was a good 10 years, I think.
Yes, that was a long time before we raised the rates.
We, the difference, there's two differences between 2014 and today. We will actually use 2017 budget rather than projected 2017 budget. But the main, the biggest change will be looking at capital projects, what the impact of capital projects is on fees and rates.
Okay, so in other words, like if we're going to go ahead and make an additional line here, this is what the fees need to be. If we're going to make a basin, this is what they need to be. If we're going to do both, that's what needs to be.
And it would not commit you to doing that. It would simply give you the information that may help you make a decision.
I see, great. Okay. All right, Mr. Ains, did you want to share anything about your perspective on this?
The concern I have with the treatment plan again is the lack of this tank because you're getting to the point where you only have a limited amount of growth that you can add and still be using the plant. can add and still be using the plant as is. So the most cost-effective alternative would be to then build the tank. When they've talked about doing expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, that really hasn't been needed, plus it's, you know, several times the cost. But they've estimated that the tank would cost $2 million when they did the study of the tank sometime before I got here.
I think it was $3 million.
And that now it's up to $3 million is their estimate. And you're going to have to be able to either fund that through loans or through rates or a combination thereof. And to get the loans, you're going to have to demonstrate to whoever you're selling bonds to that you have a flow of cash coming in to pay the debt service on those bonds. So that's where the study would show you how much you would have to implement in the rates in order to be able to fund the improvement by putting the tank in. My concern is if you don't do the rate study now, then it delays getting any capital projects done in the future. And then that delays any significant growth in your area that the master plan allows for growth. In addition, the study would be funded through the grant from the state. So it's not funded out of your sewer funds, it'd be out of grant funds.
Right. Okay, Ms. Zelnok.
So we've talked about the trunk sewer as a capital project and the storage tank. And Ms. Ains just mentioned about potentially the sewer expansion at the building. Is that something that can go into the rate study? And again, the only reason I say that is it's my understanding, basically, we're overcommitted already with our taps. And again, it's my understanding that the storage tank will be the cheapest way to get capacity. And once that capacity is used, what happens if our commitments show up and say, I want capacity? How do we address that? So I don't know if it's possible to put as part of the capital improvement project what the rates would need if we actually expanded the plant.
I think we could do something for a plant expansion, but that has not been costed out in detail. So it would have to be very broad, as long, and you wouldn't be committing to that today anyway. So it would be easy, it would be easy to do something broad.
Okay. I think that personally, for me, would be beneficial. Thank you.
I think we can handle that.
Okay, great. Okay, last question, Ms. Bellinger.
There was, there was a, this is something that Wayne brings up a lot, and it is valid. I don't know if it's valid in this case, it maybe, it may not be, but it is true about getting bids. This is a very valid thing. And it's, I see there can be advantage to sticking with the same horse on down the road, and there's also an advantage to looking at different possibilities. So I, this is something that, you know, it's a valid point that Mr. Dockett brings up often, and it's something that we, as a board, should seriously consider, just to try to make sure we're doing the best for, you know, the residents that we represent.
I wouldn't have moved forward on this if I didn't think that we were bringing forth the best.
The wealth of experiences that Tetra Tech has with our system is kind of, you can't match that.
Nobody else will ever get any experience with that way of thinking.
Okay. So anyway, we have a motion on the table to approve the smart rate study with Tetra Tech. The motion was by Chockley and support by Otto. We can have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Manley.
Yes.
Dockett.
No.
Manley. Yes, sorry. Let me think. Otto.
Yes.
Bellinger.
No.
Chockley.
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you very much, it passed. This will be really helpful for us as we move forward with a lot of our projects in the future. So we'll have at least good information. Thank you, Mr. Rubel, for your patience.
Yes, thank you for the assistance and the answers all of my tough questions. I think you appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, sincerely, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the snow removal bids. Would you like to address this one, Mr. Ains?
Actually, I probably should have the chief do this because he's probably done this more often than I have here. But actually, the process was to renew the bids. We got three or four bidders. The party that is the low bidder, I understand, Chief, you had recommended.
Yeah, if, I'm comfortable with that, the low bidder in this situation. I'm not, I've heard of them, I'm not real aware of them. I know Jennifer recommending approval of that bidder contingent on, she was going to check the references. And then, at some point, I would meet with the provider and go over each and every one of the different places that we do snow removal.
And where are they out of, the lowest bidder? Because I don't recall their name either.
She told me, and.
Plymouth.
Is it Plymouth?
Oh, Plymouth.
I believe they do other properties in the area here.
I think they're located in Plymouth.
Okay, that sounds right.
I'd ask the question, if I may, Madam Supervisor, just which, you know, where the locations were of the people. And I'm pretty sure that they were Plymouth. J&amp;M Landscaping is Northville Township. I think Scenic Landscaping is, comes up as Whitmore Lake, but is really in Green Oak.
Green Oak, I thought they were like Hamburg.
And then the other two were, I think, one was in Brighton, and I don't remember the other one.
Okay.
Well, I think MMPW was Plymouth.
Yes, MMPW is Plymouth, correct, the low bidder. It's my recollection.
Okay. So did you, any, make a motion here? Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we accept the M, what is it? I need my glasses on.
MMPW.
MMPW Services slash Unique LLC as a snow plow bids for one year, once we receive the references and when they're approved as good references.
I support. So we have a motion by Ms. Zelnok and support by Ms. Bellinger. Now we have the opportunity for more discussion. Mr. Dockett.
I would like to point out the beauty of having bids. The high bid for this is $62,210. The low bid for this is $16,635. That's $45,000 difference, folks. This is the way business is supposed to be handled. So I guess I'd like to try to get you people to look at this and understand that the way business is done is through bids. Thank you.
Okay. I'm wondering why, well, I shouldn't ask, why you only offered one year? I would.
I like it one year.
But if we lock, we could lock in a very low rate for three years, which is significantly lower than the other.
You might be broke next year.
Yeah, my reason, if you, I wanted, is had we used them in the past and we had experience with them, I would probably have gone for a, for more years. But since it's our first time using them, I thought one year, we could evaluate them and ensure, because if we get into a three-year contract, and I'm sure we'd have to get Mr. Burns involved and to get us out of that if we weren't satisfied with their service. So that was my reasoning for a one-year contract.
You did good.
Okay. Ms. Manley.
I agree with Lenore on the one-year contract, but, I mean, me personally, having the familiarity almost like with Tetra Tech, to me, with this many projects, going with a low bid kind of scares me. And being in, you know, we've had a snow plow business and it's not an easy thing, so.
It seems like the low bid is a little suspiciously low, a little too low.
Yeah, it's a pretty big difference for that amount of work.
I agree.
They may just want to, you know, kind of establish themselves here in the township, and I don't have a problem giving them a chance.
Is the bid, the contract can be canceled? Maybe, I mean, is there going to be provision that we could, if the services are inadequate?
It would be very hard to try to get a contract in the middle of a year, in the middle of a season.
Okay. Mr. Ains.
It's my understanding that this company has been doing a lot of work in this area, and so our work fits into their schedule. So they would be here anywhere, and that's why they were wanting to get the bid bad enough to be the low bidder. But again, we'll be checking the references on it to ensure. But the three references listed, I don't recall all of them, but they were, you know, substantial companies.
Okay.
Do we do credit checks on our vendors?
I don't.
Not just reference checks, but credit checks?
I don't believe so. Yeah, I'm not aware of you doing credit checks.
Madam Supervisor, if I may?
Yes.
So in looking at that, I mean, I know that J&amp;M Landscaping is local. And so I was hoping the numbers would have been a little more favorable, but they're like 85% more, basically, than the low bidder. And then I thought Scenic Landscaping, because they had a Whitmore Lake address, again, might be local, but it turns out they're in Green Oak. And they're the second lowest bid, and they're 45% higher. So as much as I, you know, think it's important, if you can do business locally, to do that, it's just that the numbers were just not close. Had they, you know, certainly been to me.
You got a second bid, you know?
Yeah, but I'm just explaining my reasoning for, you know, the decision I made was, had, and I, again, like to keep business local, if they had been a little closer in the numbers. But the numbers are quite different.
Are we able to choose the per occurrence rate as opposed to the per season price?
Yeah, that, you'll have to make that selection also.
Okay. Because last year, apparently, with only seven that needed plowing, you know, that's like $7,000. That's pretty inexpensive.
We didn't have a bad winter last year.
I know we didn't. Right, right. But I mean, otherwise, you know, 16 occurrences, that would be twice as much if you chose the MMPW. That would, the 16, 613 would allow for 16 plowings.
We tend to do probably twice as many saltings as we do, or three times as many saltings as we do plowings, just for your permission.
And that's added on to this?
It's a different price. So if we just get a dusting of snow, they come through and salt and only charge us for salting.
Okay. What's, what do you think is the best value, Mr. Wagner?
Well, we've done it both ways, and I think the best we, we've made out the best going the per push.
Per push.
And the one year, we did go with the seasonal. We actually really made out well that year because we had a lot of snow that year. But it's really just kind of a crap shoot as to whether we're going to have a lot of occurrences or not, so.
And I know with our association, we go with a, with a push also.
Push, okay. So what was your, your motion, only to choose?
My motion was to do MMPW Services slash Unique LLC per occurrence for one year based on reference reviews.
Okay. Oh, contingent on reference reviews, contingent, okay. So we have a motion by Ms. Zelnok and.
Support.
By Ms. Bellinger. Any more discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Manley?
Yes.
Dockett.
Yes.
Zelnok?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Manley? No. Otto?
No.
Okay. Thank you. That passes. Okay, the next item is higher on, oh, let's take a break here so we can let our wastewater treatment superintendent and Tammy Avril get out of here. It's getting late. Okay, we'll take a couple-minute break, just, just a couple of minutes.
Yeah, it said they had no other trucks for three years or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've seen this company around.
Sure.
Well, no, I don't know, I, I would.
Are you, are you speaking of the State Forfeiture Fund itself?
Uh, I'm, I'm speaking of, yeah, I guess so. I don't understand those.
So, the, the whole purpose of this memo and this resolution is to change, we have been the fiduciary, Northfield Township has been the fiduciary, so when there was a forfeiture, a state forfeiture, whether, well, that, we will still have a state forfeiture fund, but every now and then, the DEA team will forfeit something through the State Forfeiture Fund, not through the Federal Narcotics Fund. And they're normally, generally, very small forfeitures, maybe five thousand dollars or some jewelry, or a car, or something like that. So, it, it's the smaller forfeitures, and then we would be the fiduciary for that. The DEA would send us the money, and then we would divide that money in thirds with Canton Township and Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department.
This is in the past, you're talking about.
Right, and so now, the only thing we're doing here is changing that responsibility of the fiduciary from Northfield Township to Canton Township.
So, is the best you can do, that it's small? It's, it's small forfeitures? No, no.
These, these are all the small forfeitures.
Yeah, you, you don't have any figure. I don't know what small means.
Okay, so, just for example, we normally budget either forty-five or fifty thousand dollars a year in forfeitures, and then that, i-if we bring that in, let's just say we only bring in twenty thousand that year, we would divide that in thirds at some point and send back out to the other two departments.
Uh, but now, they're not gonna do that.
No, they're gonna still continue to do it, it's just, we're gonna send all that money to Canton, and then Canton will then return.
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna do it, not.
Right, Canton then will give us our third.
They have the administrative function.
They actually have an administrator that does forfeitures.
Okay, now, that's what I wanted to know.
Right.
Okay.
And what happens to this money? I mean, let's face it, you take it away from the crooks, you sanitize it, and then you spend it. So, I, I mean, you know, it's, it's bad, it's bad money if they have it, but it's good money after you sanitize it.
We, we, can, there's, are, you know, parameters on where we can spend it and where we can't spend it. We can't use it to employ a police officer. We can use it to buy ammunition or send an officer to training or something like that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? Oh, Ms. Bellager?
Yeah, I'm kinda curious, this is, so this is all through the state, kind of state guidelines?
Correct.
This is, is this what people are referring to when they say the civil asset forfeiture? Is this that quasi-area that some people reference?
Yeah, so, but they can, you can do that through the state, or you can do it through the federal.
And this particular document just changes the, um, the money handling to Canton, from here to Canton?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Is it money, or is it jewelry, is it?
Well, eventually, if it's jewelry, the jewelry gets sold and turned into money, or a car gets sold.
So, it's money?
It, it, it's all cash when it makes it into our bank account, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can we have a roll call vote on this too, please, then?
Chockley?
Yes.
Bellager?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Zelnoc?
Yes.
Docket?
No.
Okay, thank you, that passed. The next item is the Detroit DEA Task Force. So, I will make a motion approving, actually, who signs this? Chief, do you sign it?
Actually, I sign this, yeah.
You sign it, okay. Motion approving, uh, Chief of Public Safety to sign the annual agreement with the Department of Justice for the continued participation in the Detroit DEA Task Force.
I'll support.
So, motion by Chockley and support by Otto. Any discussion on this one? Ms. Bellager?
Now, do I understand this to actually be this organization that we're now sending over to Canton?
No, this is, this is the team, this is the actual annual agreement that we have with the Department of Justice with, for us to put one person in that team. And so, when that team forfeits something, they either forfeit it federally or through the state, and what you just approved was where they forfeit it through the state and who's gonna be the fiduciary for that. This is the annual agreement that we bring to the board every year at this time to have approved, to continue that member of the department on that DEA Task Force.
So, if we don't approve this, then what would happen? That member would do what, or what would change?
I guess if you didn't approve this, then he would return back to a regular-
Officer.
-police officer for Northfield Township. I highly recommend approving this. The assets that he brings to Northfield Township is really incredible when we need him to. And just as a side note, he, he was part of a team that recently took eighty, I believe it was eighty-eight pounds of heroin off the street in Novi and forfeited over a million dollars. So, it's, uh, it's, it's a, not, not just because we get forfeitures, is this of value to Northfield Township, but the resources he can bring in when we need resources on any kind of a drug crime in Northfield Township, it's, it's, it's very, very valuable to Northfield Township.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Docket?
Yeah, I don't see how he brings anything here. Uh, this is a full-time officer that is not on our register here. He does not work in our township. We pay him full-time wages with full benefits, health insurance, retirement, paid time off, two days a month, holiday pay, twelve and a half days a year, automobile from the drive, uh, insurance for the car, gas, tires, oil, maintenance for the car, clothing allowance, and all the other equipment that an officer gets when he, to do his job, or she gets, guns, phones, radios. How much money did the police department get back this year? Would you like to see, I'd like to see that.
Do we get covered? I mean, and how much, and is it any kind of a-
I can tell you that they just made a deposit of, I think, seventy-seven thousand into the, that's just one deposit. We get deposits all year long, but, uh, he's brought in well over a million dollars, a million and a half dollars. But again, while that-
A million and a half over the six or seven, eight years.
Yeah, and then there's another, probably close to a million dollars that's outstanding that is waiting to go through the court system to, you know, be adjudicated.
Well, they quit paying us a few months, a few years ago.
Well, but that was very short-lived.
So, Bill, with that money, we have purchased cars?
Yes.
We purchased the boats? Did we purchase the boat?
We may have used, I can't remember if we used the police department for their, that, their portion. Um, we, we send people to training, we buy computers, we, there, there's a whole booklet on what we can do and what we can't do.
Well, we can't get the money back that we pay them. We don't, I mean, the, the people in Northfield Township is paying the, all the wages.
And, and, and just real quick, he, he does spend a fair amount of time working cases in Northfield Township, too.
Okay, thank you.
So, is it, is it true that we do pay his salary, and they can't reimburse us his salary for the time they?
That's correct. The only thing we, we get reimbursed for is his overtime.
Okay, so we get reimbursed from the Fed or whatnot on his overtime, and then we get an unknown amount based on what is seized and so forth?
Correct.
And that can be used for, like, as mentioned, cars or training or something, but not his actual paycheck?
Correct.
I mean, in all honesty, is this and that plus?
It has been.
But would we have got these other items? In other words, it's kinda like, are these items we probably would not get if they weren't only that we could get them in that location?
Yes.
We would get these items nonetheless?
We would not.
We would not? Oh, so, how can I say it? I'm trying to verbalize, are we just kinda being pulled along to spend in just certain areas, where we would not otherwise use or spend our resources in those areas?
Well-
Because it's forced that we can only spend that money in those-
Right, but it's, it's saving us money in our police general fund budget by not having to purchase it out of there.
Cause, so those are things we would have to purchase?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, that's kinda what I was asking. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Manley?
I think my opinion, the bigger picture than the money spent, it's like, this person is working towards getting those drugs off the street. That was, that eighty-eight pounds of heroin, or whatever you just said.
Yeah, that, that's, I believe that was-
Yeah, it wasn't here in Northfield, but it would trickle down to Northfield, so.
I think that was close to a half a million, uh, half a million doses of heroin.
Yeah, I'm personally fine with that, just to get the drugs off the street, so.
Right. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion by Chockley, support by Otto. Any more discussion? Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Bellager?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Docket?
No.
Zelnoc?
Yes. Okay, five to one, that passes, thank you. Okay, the next item is the organization chart, and I'm not quite sure what we're, what we're doing with this.
It's just approving it. Um, I, from the last meeting, what we did is, I was asked to put a key in the description showing that the dashes meant that it was departments or a collective group, and the asterix denotes non-paid committees.
Okay.
But you didn't do that, is that right?
Yeah, which I did.
She did, okay.
And then I moved to the Board of Review, which I had it under supervisor, removed it back over, uh, under the commissions and committees.
Right.
Where's, where's the dash?
I am supposed to be the secretary to that, though, but thankfully, Lisa does a lot of that.
Where's the dash at? Like, see the star?
The, the dash, Ms.-
The dashes are around the committees, the dashes are around the township board itself, and then down at the bottom, you have, the police department has dashes around it, consultants have dashes around it, fire department has dash.
Okay, I'm looking for it. I was looking for it, I was looking for it.
A line dash, no, we didn't do it that way.
So, again, the dash on this means that it's a group of people, it's not just an individual.
It's not an individual, it's a group of people. Either a collective group, as in consultants or committees, or it's a department.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. So, did you wanna make a motion on this?
Yeah, so I'll make a, a motion to accept the organizational chart as drafted.
I'll support.
Okay, so we have a motion by Otto, support by Bellager. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, six-zero, thank you. Okay, Resolution seventeen-five-seventy-four, residential opt-out of smart meters. Ms. Bellager, did you want to deal with this one?
I could, um, make a motion that the township adopts the resolution, um, I don't know what word, this resolution in support of residential opt-out of advanced meter programs commonly referred to as smart meters.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Bellager. Do we have support?
Uh, support.
And support by Mr. Docket. Okay, discussion. Oh, Ms. Otto, I'm sorry.
So, all this means is that the township is, um, is asking, is saying that we support that smart meters don't necessar, are not a requirement to be used in the township?
Yes, and that, we support the, um, the efforts of them to move the House bill out of the committee so it can be on the floor for our representatives to discuss.
Okay, so, in the event that, um, I mean, this really doesn't have any teeth in it to where we can't force DTE or-
Absolutely not.
Okay.
And there will be a lot more discussion then on the language of this bill, I assume, when it gets out?
Yes, correct, and there will be amendments and all this, and our representatives will deal with it.
Cause I was a little uncomfortable about a couple things, or questioning a couple things, but, um, but that's not part of our, our resolution.
No, we can contact that, um, chair for the Energy Chair Committee, or, um, chair members on that committee, or our representatives.
I guess. Everybody ready for a roll call vote?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Chockley?
Next. Sure, I'll pass. All right, I don't know.
Get her later.
Get me later.
Go ahead, vote, come on.
I don't know, I go back and forth on this one.
Hey, hey.
All right, I will say yes.
Manley, yes. Zelnoc?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Docket?
Yes.
Bellager?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I did appreciate the portion that got taken out about us, them not getting charged.
I agree too, I agree with that.
I just didn't think we should tell people, I mean, tell businesses what to charge.
I agree.
So, there you go. Okay, that passed, thank you. Next item, SEMCA delegate and alternate designation.
I'd like to be considered as an alternate, or, I mean, I understand you wanted to be a delegate, I'll be willing to be an alternate.
Yeah, Howard was the alternate last, last cycle, last time?
Uh, support.
Okay, so we have a motion. Well, so, we, we didn't have a motion yet.
We haven't got-
Uh, Ms. Belliger, did you want to deal with this one?
I could, um, make a motion that the township adopts the resolution, um, I don't know what word. This resolution is support of residential opt-out of advanced meter programs commonly referred to as smart meters.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Belliger. Do we have support?
Uh, support.
And support by Mr. Docket. Oh, Ms. Otto, I'm sorry.
So, all this means is that the township is, um, is asking, is saying that we support that smart meters don't necessar, are not a requirement to be used in the township?
Yes, and that, we support the, um, the efforts of them to move the House bill out of the committee so it can be on the floor for our representatives to discuss.
Okay, so, in the event that, um, I mean, this really doesn't have any teeth in it to where we can't force DTE or-
Absolutely not.
And there will be a lot more discussion then on the language of this bill, I assume, when it gets out?
Yes, correct, and there will be amendments and all this. And our representatives will deal with it.
Because I was a little uncomfortable about a couple of things, or questioning a couple of things, but... But that's not part of our, our resolution.
No, we can contact that, um, chair for the energy chair committee, or, um, chair members on that committee, or our representatives.
I guess. Everybody ready for a roll call vote?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead. Next. Sure, I'll pass. All right, I don't know.
Get her later.
Get me later.
Go ahead, vote, come on.
I don't know, I go back and forth on this one.
Hey, hey.
All right, I will say yes.
Manley, yes. Zelenak?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Docket?
Yes.
Belliger?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I did appreciate the portion that got taken out about us, them not getting charged.
I agree too. I agree with that.
I just didn't think we should tell people, I mean, tell businesses what to charge.
I agree.
So, there you go. Okay, that passed, thank you. Next item, SEMCOG delegate and alternate designation.
I'd like to be considered as an alternate, or, I mean, as I understand, you wanted to be a delegate. I'll be willing to be an alternate.
Yeah, Howard was the alternate last, last cycle, last time?
Support.
Okay, so we have a motion. Well, so, we, we didn't have a motion yet.
We haven't gone there yet.
Okay.
He's ahead of the motion.
Okay, I, I know Ton was interested in alternate. I'm interested in delegate. Steve can't be a delegate, but he could be an alternate, so...
Steve don't want it, I got an email.
I've often been the alternate to different organizations when the board members haven't wanted to be on the boards. It's up to your discretion. If I'm an alternate, then I'll be doing that and not doing something else, so... But I can go either way.
Okay.
But Marlene, you've done this in the past, or been involved in the past?
I've been involved with SEMCOG in the past. I was, before I left, being a county commissioner, I was the chair of the data center advisory committee, and it's, this is a, an important intergovernmental collaborative organization that does a lot of good research on transportation and housing and economic development. That's pretty critical that we do this region-wide. And it, it's a, a great opportunity for our township to be heard and to get, um, considered for funding, grants, you know, or, or projects.
Can we have a motion?
Okay.
And then discussion on this?
All right, I, well-
I'll make, I'll make the motion on the delegate.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ma, I'd make the motion that we have Marlene be the delegate for SEMCOG.
I'll second. So, we have a motion by Ms. Otto and support by Ms. Zelenak for me to be the delegate.
Well, there was gonna be two, so I, I would like to say that, um-
Well, we, I was-
There's only one delegate.
There's only one delegate. I thought we'd do it one at a time.
Right, one at a time, okay. So, a motion by Otto and support by Zelenak for me to be the delegate to the SEMCOG general assembly. All in favor, say aye.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, please.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chockley?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Docket?
No.
Belliger?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so then we have the alternate position, and I will leave that to the pleasure of, of the board. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that Ton is our delegate.
Okay. So, we have a-
The alternate, alternate.
Alternate, excuse me.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Docket. Okay, motion fails for the, for lack of a second. I would like to make a motion for Mr. Ains to be the alternate to the SEMCOG general assembly.
I'll second.
Motion by Chockley, support by Manley. Any more discussion?
All I, all I know is I got an email from him who said he didn't want to do it.
Ms. Belliger?
Well, it said on this paper, your only elected officials may hold a delegate position. Well, an alternate delegate is yet a delegate to actually take the place of the main delegate in, in case there's an absence. So, it would seem that only elected official really should be the alternate as well, according to the paperwork, unless I misunderstand something. Which is why I thought perhaps it was an error in the previous township manager's being an alternate to the SEMCOG.
No, um, it's either- Elected official, staffer, individual selected by the member.
It can be either, um, for the alternate, could be a, an elected official, or it can be, um, Ms., you know, our township manager. So, it could be either. However, I believe any board members who would like to attend the SEMCOG meetings can go.
But does it, does the alternate then have voting power?
No, the alternate would not have voting power unless the delegate is not there.
That's what I'm saying, though, but then it contradicts itself, saying only elected officials may hold that delegate position. And an alternate delegate is stepping up to a delegate position in the absence of the main delegate.
Well, I'm-
Which is why I was, I thought that was just kind of maybe a, a verbiage that wasn't very clear on this.
Yep. No, um, this, this is their actual form from SEMCOG, so it wasn't, I didn't generate this form.
I was referring to the, the written information on top here.
So, anyway, so we have a motion, yes. Do we have any more discussion on it? Mr. Docket?
Yeah, what's the dues for that, anybody know?
What's the dues? It's in the budget.
Yep.
I know, but I want to know how much they are.
It does say here, only the delegate or alternate who have been appointed by their governing bodies can vote.
Can vote.
So, the alternate can vote.
Or alternate, if the delegate's not there.
Right.
Yeah.
It's just kind of-
Does anybody know what the dues are?
Not offhand.
No, not offhand. It is in last year's budget, though, I mean, this year's budget.
I do know that for many years that we paid dues and we didn't participate in this.
Yeah.
And we started, and the last board started participating in it. And that, isn't that where the community block grant came from?
That came from the urban county.
Oh, the urban county, okay.
Urban county, but there is-
But we didn't participate in that either until the last time, too.
I've been going to them, yeah, right.
No, I meant the last board.
Right.
Because we weren't participating in anything outside.
Right, but it's important if we're going to be considered for, for grants, or to see opportunities to apply to things-
Or to understand any transportation that's happening in our county or, or area.
Absolutely. So, um, so it is important that we contribute, that we, that we do, um, make an effort to participate in these groups. They also provide a great deal of information for our planning purposes, you know, and we don't pay extra for that. So, anyway, we have a motion. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Manley.
Can we please repeat the motion?
Uh, the motion is to appoint Mr. Ains as the alternate to SEMCOG.
Mr. Ains is a busy man. He's got enough to do.
SEMCOG meets three times a year, and they have some really good, um, training, and it, it's very useful, so-
They don't, they project out maybe thirty years from now. Who cares?
Roll call vote, please.
Belliger?
No.
Docket?
No.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Okay. The next item is the resignation of the code enforcement officer, and the letter has been placed in your packet. I thought, no, it was sent out to everyone, and there's a memo here from Mr. Ains. Would you like to say anything about this, Mr. Ains?
The resignation was a surprise to me. He had not talked to me about it. He put in an email form. I think he's talked to the supervisor, though. My understanding was that you had a previous ordinance officer for about two years, and then there was a gap, and during that time, um, the prior manager did it for a while, the supervisor did it for a while, I guess, or a combination thereof. And the question is, do you want to have us proceed with looking for a replacement employee? Or there are companies that do supply code enforcement people, one being, um, your present planning firm, um, they have a branch that does it. There's several other different alternative firms, so you could bid it if you wanted to do so. Or if you want to leave it, oh, leave it vacant. The problem with leaving it vacant is we're already getting substantial number of calls from people who are wanting somebody to respond and enforce the laws and so forth. So, while you may have been getting complaints from people who didn't want you to force those, you also have the other side where you get complaints where people do want you to. And, um, and I won't have enough time to do them all. I'm kind of, I'm doing them when I can, but I can't do them all. So, my question is, what direction does the board want to go? If you go through a process of hiring, you'll probably go through a, a time of advertising the position, a time of interviewing, and then appointing somebody, if you get somebody that's qualified. If you go out for proposals from the firms, you'll probably have the same type of time involved. But in their case, if one of their employees left, there'd be other employees who would fill in. So, um, you do have that advantage if it's an organization. So, I, I guess I'm asking the board for direction.
Okay, Ms. Otto?
So, um, the prior board, we did not have an ordinance officer in place, and the whole point of putting an off, ordinance officer in places to minimize the blight in Northfield Township. So, um, I think it is a, is it a, it is a valued, uh, position in our township. I understand, um, I understand why he left and everything, but, um, I do feel that it is so important that we went from one day a week, which the gentleman was our first hire for ordinance officer, only did it one day a week, and we went to two days a week. I would like to consider both options, seeing what it would cost to have, um, a firm come in, and also, um, hiring, and make a determination based on both.
We certainly could do that if you want to.
Ms. Zelenak?
Um, Ms. Ains, do you have an idea what it would cost if we went and had a firm do it? Is it within the twenty-five dollar range, or?
No, I don't have an idea right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I could check with some people who do have these firms working for them to see, but I imagine it depends on what number hours and what the tasks are that they have them do. So, it probably varies, and the larger the community, the more hours they would be working.
Right, and theoretically, um, if, if tickets were written, people, we, we could be more stringent about how we do the, how the township does blight and, and all sorts of things. And if tickets are written and tickets are paid, theoretically, that could recoup some of the costs. However, that wasn't the goal, that wasn't the approach that we were taking. It was, it was trying to get compliance. And, um, Mike went out, worked with people, you know, some people just don't have the means, or they're handicapped, or, um, you know, or something. And, and he worked with them carefully to try to get, you know, improvements, and he did, but it's time-consuming. It was, you know, he would spend a lot of time with that. You saw in his report, he had, he had gotten, um, you know, a lot of things taken care of, but then some, he would get the blight cleaned up, and a month later, there it is back again. And then he's back on the doorstep, knocking on the door, and trying to get it cleaned up again. And, um, that was just the blight part. You know, there's, there's the grass, the blight. I mean, we can do better with our ordinances and our procedures. Perhaps having a company in for a while and getting some, um, real procedures would be helpful, because there is nothing written down there. I wrote in my report, you know, kind of some of my observations, but we, we didn't really have a procedure for a lot of things, and the follow-up is critical. So, if you send them a letter and say, "You got ten days, you better be out there in ten days." You know, otherwise, people just say, "Shh," they're never gonna, they're never gonna come and take a look again. We have that problem all over the place, not just, not just with blight. We've got it with, with other things that are going on in the township, too. So, this board needs to decide if it's got the, um, the will to actually do anything about some of the problems that we're having and that we're getting the complaints about.
Ms. Belliger?
Yeah, can we make a motion to go ahead and move forward with, um, uh, looking into possibly companies, and also going ahead and getting another, send out for, uh, application for people to apply for the position as well? Can we make a motion to move forward with this?
Okay.
For code enforcement, of course.
Yep, and then also for two days a week.
Well, okay.
And if we're twenty-five dollars an hour?
Should start at the same point. Why not?
So, we have a motion by Ms. Belliger and support by Ms. Zelenak. Ms. Zelenak, to, um, state the rest of it, please, I'm running out.
To, um, lo, look into both, uh, the possibility of using a corporation, or whatever you called that, and I also want to just start putting, yeah, putting out there the request for somebody to apply for the position, just a regular employee, as opposed to hiring through a business, a firm. We can look into both options, but I want to begin that. So, we can start screening possible employees while we maybe get data, and whether or not we want to go with a firm. The firm may not be what we want to do for our community, or it may be.
Yeah, and I think, um, if that's motion, I mean, I do think we need to add an hourly rate, and the hours, two times, to sixteen hours.
I think not to exceed sixteen, as, as this paper says, twenty-five an hour, not to exceed.
Twenty thousand a year. Twenty thousand eight hundred a year.
Twenty thousand eight hundred a year.
Right here, yep.
Sixteen hours per week.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Belliger with support by Zelenak to look into a company and or post for an employee, um, to pay twenty thousand eight hundred dollars per year for sixteen hours a week.
For code enforcement.
For code enforcement. Okay. Any more discussion on that, on Ms. Otto?
Yeah, the only thing I would say is if we, in doing our due diligence on the companies, even if they're over that amount, at least bring that information back to the board so at least we have a good understanding.
Yes, that'd be fine.
Right, okay. So, um, roll call vote? Oh, more question, Mr. Docket?
Yeah, I think we should, uh, be a little kinder and gentler, and, uh, treat people right, that we have to remember that this, this property don't belong to us, it belongs to them. So, I had some things I wanted to say about this, especially about Janet, but she's not here, so I'm not going to mention it tonight. I'll mention it some other time. Thank you.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Docket?
No.
Belliger?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes, five-one.
I'll make a motion to accept, um, the resignation of code, code enforcement officer Michael Rankin, and thank him for his duty.
With regrets?
With regrets, yes.
Support?
Okay, so we have a motion by Zelenak and support by Belliger to accept the resignation of, uh, Mr. Rankin with regrets, and thank him for his service. Okay.
I have to discussion. I'd just like to say, I think Mike did a really good job. I'm sorry to see him leave. I think the town looks better, and I think that's important, as you want to bring in new people, that you abide by your rules. So, they know that you have rules, you will abide by them. I think that's an important message to send to people, and maybe, who knows? Maybe that's some of our issue, that we don't enforce our rules, so... But again, I would really like to thank Mike. It was, um, a pleasure knowing him, and I'll miss him.
Yeah, I feel the same way. He, it was hard when he told me he was going to resign, um, that Friday, and Mr. Ains had just left as, or was in the process of leaving, as he was telling me about it, because I had hired, you know, I picked Mike out, and, um, I thought he was a great, um, code enforcement guy, and he, and a great individual, and he really did care about the people. He even had to admonish for their blight, so, um, anyway, it's, it's hard to see him go, but we'll move on, okay? So, all in favor of accepting the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, um, so we, we do have a discussion item here on code enforcement, though. No, this is, um, that was the resignation. The discussion is that, um, I wanted to bring up, is that we have several outstanding violations. Um, we have letters prepared by our zoning administrator on businesses that are operating, operating without approvals in areas of the township. We've gotten complaints about these businesses. They- They have kind, they're, they're not home-based businesses. A lot of them are operating out in the agricultural area. They've become large landscape companies or, or even other types of companies. And they're just being, you know, they, they had operated under the radar for, for a long, long time, and now we're getting complaints from the neighbors about them. We have letters prepared for, for a couple of the companies that are pretty well-known. But the, the question is pursuing, I mean, finishing the project here. We, we need the consistent follow-up to get something to happen with some of these businesses. And we need somebody to go out and say, "Okay, you can't do this landscape business out here. You haven't filed for zoning compliance," or "It's not approved," or whatever, to try to bring them into compliance or have them find a place where they will be in compliance. And the board, you know, not necessarily the board, but people have just looked the other way for many, many years, and so now we're having this problem. I, we've probably already been having this problem. We've got a logging operation going on in one, one area we're getting complaints about. And these are beyond the blight, you know, issues. They're the more concerning things with, you know, zoning compliance, and we need those things to be followed up on, which we could theoretically do with a code enforcement officer or any one of us. And then, you know, we have the one situation with the too many cars, you know, so those all need to be followed up on, and things just tend to get dropped when we don't have a code enforcement person. We've got condemned, or probably should be condemned, homes around in the township too. We, if we're going to be consistent, we'll get some progress. If we're going to look the other way every two months, or six months, or a year, when we lose our code enforcement person, then people just don't take us seriously. So I'm, I'm just bringing this up so we can have a little bit of a discussion about it and what to do. I, I personally think if we want to clean up, if we want to clean up a lot of these areas and bring people into compliance, which also protects them and their businesses, we ought to just, we ought to do it.
So as I recall, I'm trying to think way back. This was probably several years ago. We had a situation that was out in the agricultural area too, where it was, and I'm not going to name the business, but there was a business wanting to park their trucks in the area. They had a, I guess they had a landscaping business permit, but they didn't have it to the extent, because they had fertilizer and...
Ah, that one.
Okay, that one.
Yep.
That one came to the planning commission. And I think they were told that they had to have some requirements in order to continue doing what they were doing, and they didn't want to do it. So they no longer have that part of the business in Whatmore Lake, or as far as I know, they don't have it in Whatmore Lake. I'm not saying that, or in Northville Township. So the thought is, in that situation, that went to the planning commission, but it only went to the planning commission because they went to request what, a variance or a...
They needed a, they, they were a non-conforming.
Yeah.
Non-conforming sort, they weren't really grandfathered, they, they had been in there so lo, so, so long.
I know they were.
Right, and we were...
And they were complaining, the neighbors complained against them too.
Mm-hmm, and they came and they attempted to get a conditional use permit.
Okay, that's what it was.
Right, conditional use permit, which I believe was approved by the planning commission so that the planning, so that the township could have some control over the numbers of cars, where they were parked, what they were doing there. And when it came to the board, the neighbors didn't like that because they didn't, they wanted them gone, and the board did not approve the conditional use permit. So now they just continue with no, nothing.
Yeah, they're stealing business.
And they didn't, and, and so now they, they're pretty much been doing whatever they want, and we can't have any control over them because they had been there so long. What the planning commission did do was add that kind of business to a different zoning district because nothing existed where they could exist. So it was a difficult situation, but that was one of them. We're getting other ones, other calls on those kinds of things too, and...
So how was it brought in that? What I'm trying to get to is how, how was it brought in that situation? How did it get to a point where they applied for the conditional use, other than the complaint? Did it, we, I don't know if we had an ordinance officer at the time.
Didn't they want to expand?
Yeah, they did want to.
So that's why.
Right, they also wanted to expand, yeah.
So...
Mr. Wyland was out there multiple times.
I really feel that we, we still need to move forward on some of this.
We do.
If it's just mailing out letters and everything at this point, we need to get whatever we need to get out. I hate to say this to our attorney, but if we need attorney assistance in some of this, I'm, I'm sure that Paul's office could provide us assistance.
Yeah, what, what we've been doing generally is we've been trying to use the tickets, and the code officer did a lot of talking, right? But the recalcitrant ones end up in court, for example, the cars, but that's still a district court case, but, but like right now, my office, we don't have a witness. So even if we have a prosecution in a case, we don't have a witness to go and testify. It's Mr. Ains would like to come and testify, but he said, "One more job we're going to give him," but, so we actually need a code enforcement officer.
I was going to talk a little closer.
Yep.
Mr. Burns, have you talked to Mike, please?
What I'm, what I'm saying is, is that typically what we've been doing is just issuing civil infraction tickets, which are handled at the district court. But if the property owners don't come into compliance, we have to start a, some court of a, of a more serious court action, and we need a witness. And so without a zoning enforcement officer right now, we don't have a witness. It'd be like me trying to prosecute a speed ticket without a police officer testifying in the courthouse, so we need somebody to go out there and inspect and take pictures and so on and so forth and testify.
Does it have to be a code enforcement officer? Can it be any, any other employee of the township?
It should be somebody designated with some authority. Sometimes, depending where it is, we get people with specific licenses, like if there's a plumbing problem, or a sewer problem, or a fire problem, we get the people that have the proper licenses so they can be qualified as experts in the court system.
So I could not go out there and just do this, right?
Could you go out?
Right.
Right, Paul?
Right. It's a pretty thankless job, that's what the problem is, you know.
Yeah. Yep. So, I don't know. So we just need someone to go out and count cars, for instance.
And they have to stay with it. So for example, like the car case that we're talking about, I no longer have a witness in that case, right? He just resigned.
He just resigned, yeah.
So we have to kind of start reinventing the wheel. But that's why it's important to have somebody who does this, that has experience with it, that stays with it.
My, my thought is, based on that, I think we should wait until we get our code officer and continue the progress. Otherwise, it seems like we're going to have a lot of irate people, there won't be much we can do about it, and until we can have a, you know, get back to where we're on level ground and go forward.
But our zoning administrator has authority to, to do some of that, and she has written letters. We have two letters written and prepared to go to a couple of those businesses, and we can have more, you know, because she can check them out.
I mean, is she going to go to the property? Is she going to take the pictures? Is she going to...
She, she has done code enforcement, actually, for McKenna.
If she wants to do it, and then at what rate?
Yeah, I don't know what her, what her rate would be, but, but as, as far as, you know, kind of losing momentum.
We need copies of that letter too. If she sends out letters, we need to know about it.
They haven't gone out yet, but...
But when they do go out, we need to be notified.
That's appropriate. Ms. Manley.
I think, you know, our best bet's probably going to be going with an outside firm to get some rules established, to get some, you know, basis of steps that need to happen, you know, to kind of clean up the mess, almost like how we hired the outside assessing firm. You need somebody to come in, straighten it out, get us in order before we can kind of hire our own person. It's just my thinking right now.
Right, because there are training issues too, right now.
Right.
So, well, we'll let Mr., well, we had the motion, so it will get looked at, but...
But I think as far as the letters, if you have letters sitting on a desk, I wouldn't wait for the, you know, the ordinance officer to be in place, or whoever we hire.
Right.
Get the letters out, get at least that part going.
You might get something moving, fixed, just based on the letters.
Right, just tell them they have to come in and apply for their zoning compliance and, you know, see what happens with them. Okay, so we'll, we can push forward with some of those, but I'm getting calls. Mr. Ains is getting calls. I get a lot of them, and I, I hate to say, "Well, I'm sorry, we can't help you, you know, you're just going to have to put up with that mess next door."
Do we have a data, a database for all this?
A database, yes.
Okay.
Um, yes. It's all actually tracked in BSNA now.
Okay.
Right, but, but we have file folders of all of the different cases that are open. I, I do know that, and there's photographs, so, okay, good. I feel better that we're at least not dropping the entire thing. Okay, bills. Does anybody have anything in the bills? Mr. Docket? You're in the pates, right? Okay.
Center of the page, Dr. Tech, flow monitoring, $7,308. A no-bid contract.
Okay.
To go along with this $10,000 that we give them, and, you know, it's just terrible the way that we gave this, give this money away to these people with no bids. In my opinion. Page three of 13, top, the very top, Northville Township. What is the summer home? So 73 bucks. What do we, do we own something, or we, why are we paying $73 taxes? Does anybody know?
The township does own some property that we cannot say it is for a public use. It's been, you know, foreclosed on or something, and we actually own it, but we can't, it's not a park, it's, you know, there's not a public use for it, so we, we're not exempt from the taxes. This is where we probably want to sell these parcels.
Well, there's no roads, it's all wet. I mean, it's worthless, and if, why has the county not give it to us, or I mean, or sell it to us? We bought all of them.
They did give it, no, these are not the summer homes. These are not the summer homes parcels here, Mr. Docket.
Oh, oh, okay.
This is like a, like a half, a really skinny little parcel in between.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I was thinking it was summer homes up back here.
No, no, those are summer tax, but now it's not the ones.
So what we should do is...
I, I got it, yeah, we, we own some.
So, I mean, this isn't for the park, correct?
No.
Because as you, so...
If it was for the park, we wouldn't be paying any taxes.
That's why, that's why I was wondering.
I think we should work potentially with the county to see what happens.
I talked to Wagner about this, reset two toilets at, at the North Territorial. That's on page seven of 13, a little bit below middle. Master plumber, reset two toilets at 75 Barker, excuse me, at the North Territorial Fire Hall, 833 bucks. And this was just, this was just labor to sell them. I, I thought that's a lot of money.
There, there was more than just labor. There was parts. They actually did work on the urinal. All, all, so this is the area that's used by the elections people. Those restrooms have been in disrepair for a couple of years, a few, a few years, and so they went in and, if you flushed a toilet, it leaked all over the floor, and so we, uh...
Well, there's only two toilets out there, isn't there?
And the, and the urinal. He didn't, in the description.
Yeah, there's a woman's and a man's.
Right, yep.
All right. And then there's, okay, so that was Master Craft, and there was another one here, and the, the township taxpayers paid $1,192,248, uh, $248, so $1,192,248.40 this month for to run our township. Very expensive, and that's about all I have on, on the bills.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the bills as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Otto.
I'll second.
And a second by Ms. Manley to accept the bills as presented. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, okay, six zero, thank you. Now, the next area are all of the items that you pulled out, Mr. Docket.
Okay.
So let's start with the nine twenty-six minutes.
Nine twenty-six minutes. I'm wondering, we, we talked about, we made a motion here on page one, I don't see a page number on it, it's the top page, the first page. I think that's the first page, yeah. And it says, "Writing to the, to every board member, a monthly synopsis of the case." That was for the lawyer. "I want to know, and I'd like to get a copy of, did we allow, did we let Fred, another lawyer of ours, Fred, is he still a lawyer for Northville Township? Fred?"
Fred Lucas?
Fred Lucas.
When we need him.
Okay, so he needs to be notified that we're to get this letter if he, if he's doing, if somebody's stolen this, or whatever. Our labor attorney needs to be notified on this, and the police department lawyer, fire department lawyer, we, we need to know what's going on here. We voted on this, so these people need to be notified. And when we notify them, I think I, we should get copies of this, so we know they've been notified.
Okay. Are you asking that we all get a copy of the letter that we send to the attorneys?
I'm, I'm asking, yes, that we notify them so that when things happen, we get letters so we know what's happening. I mean, we voted on that, didn't we?
So you're asking that we send an initial letter, that the board gets a copy of the initial letter that we send to our attorneys that informs them that we want these updates?
Well, I just want them to be notified. I don't know how they're going to be notified, but they, they need to be notified so that we keep on top of this, so we know what's going on.
Okay.
And that was one thing. On that page, the next one is 28th, and it's the retreat. And I don't mind one bit that they have in here on that Docket left at 9:19, but I would like to have him mention the fact that this was not a regular meeting, this is a retreat, and it was set up with a time limit, like none of our other, none of our other ones are. This was supposed to be from seven to nine. I had a commitment at 9:30, so I left, I had to leave. So I left, I had to leave, and three minutes later, the meeting was over with, according to, it got over with at nine-twenty-two. And I left the meeting at nine-nineteen, which was fine. I don't care to zinnier, but I wish they would've elaborated a little bit about, this was supposed to be from seven to nine. So that's why I didn't, I don't like that.
Do you wanna make a motion to add that to the minutes, that this was intended to be a two-hour meeting, two-hour retreat?
Yeah, I'd like to say it's not a regular meeting. It's a retreat that we scheduled from seven to nine. And then it ran over, and that's why Dockett left. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Miss Selma.
Number...
Oops.
Excuse me?
I have a comment on the minutes.
Oh, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you. So the board listed possible goals under discussion item one's, priorities indicated in parentheses.
Indicated what?
So it just said priorities indicated in parentheses. So is that the board person's priority? I wasn't sure. I was confused, I was actually confused on that. So I wasn't sure of the intent of that statement.
Okay.
Yeah, because people went around and said that's a priority.
So it's priorities...
It wasn't conducted in a very clear way.
Right, right, right. I agree with that.
And it's not anything serious.
I mean, do we need it?
We could've voted.
No, no, I mean, do we need the priorities indicated in parentheses? So what we're saying is, the board, the person in parentheses mentioned that as a priority. Is that correct?
Yes.
Could we revert it like that?
Or just take that out?
Or take it out.
Or take it out, yeah. I'm good with either or.
I just say, take it out?
Yeah, it makes sense.
We'll remove that.
Just remove that sentence?
Just remove that sentence. I think the people's names can stay in there.
Yep, yep. I think the people's name is fine, but the priorities indicated in parentheses, if we remove that.
Okay.
And then on number two, set goals and priorities for the township for the upcoming. The bottom one is work on developing a board action plan based on goals listed in discussion item one. Correct?
That's how I understood it.
Okay.
Because that's what I, that's what I provided.
Yeah, but work on developing a board action plan based on goals listed.
Oh.
Listed...
Above, I mean, in one.
In item one.
In item one?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. So are we going to make some little comment about this was a two-hour planned, two-hour retreat with that? Well, we also started eleven minutes late, so, you know, that's a challenge, is us starting and ending on time.
I had a prior commitment.
Yeah, that was fine, Mr. Dockett.
I think we should add that.
I know, but I think it should...
I think it should reflect that the meeting was intended to be from seven to nine.
That's correct. That's what it was.
Yeah.
I personally don't feel that it needed to be called out that you left at that time either, but...
Well, you're not three minutes early, but I mean, I understand that, but...
We could remove that as well.
It says that in other things, though.
Oh, does it?
I've never even noticed.
I think it's just a habit.
I'd have to shut my mouth if you take that out.
I recommend we take that out.
What, left at nine nineteen?
Please, let's take that out.
All right.
It's a deal. I'll make that deal with you.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
It'll still be there, but it'll have an X, a line to it. All right.
Fire, fire department. Bill, I know I talked to you today, but I forgot.
Before we go onto the fire department, can we make a motion to accept the minutes?
We should.
As corrected. I'm sorry.
I support.
Okay, so a motion by Otto and support by Bellinger to accept the minutes as corrected. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, there.
Yeah, I didn't wanna go on to something else, and then we'd forget.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you. Okay.
I talked to you earlier today, but I...
Otto made the motion. I supported.
Okay, Mr. Dockett?
I thought we voted.
Wait, go ahead. We did.
She missed, she missed it.
Oh. You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All the fire department report. I'm on pins and needles. Why, why didn't you tell us about the Chelsea? I wanted to find out how much money we made, and you didn't put it in your report?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I did forget that. I actually don't have the final, I guess I could add them all up, but it's around twenty-two thousand, I think.
Twenty-two thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, my next question. How much did we rake in, and what are we doing with it?
So it'll go in various departments depending on who owned which piece of equipment, or how that piece of equipment was purchased.
Did you pull any? You said you might not sell. You had said you might not sell everything.
Yeah, no, we sold everything. We got an acceptable amount for...
Okay.
Are you done with fire department? I wanna, if I could, make a real quick comment, fire department-wise. This is fire prevention week, and this year's theme is every second counts, plan two ways out. Check your, the batteries in your smoke detector, and our police and fire open house is this Sunday from one to four P.M., so we do have the helicopter plan, the big attraction that everybody likes to see, so come on out. Thank you.
Nothing on the please, but we let the...
He didn't pull that one out.
They, we let the cocks go, I mean, the sewer. On the back page of the sewer, you know, one, two, three, fourth one down.
Oh, yes.
"Repair roof on office building." What roof, what office building, and was there damage? Does anybody know?
We reduced Dan, so we can't ask him now.
I know.
Oh, sorry.
I'll check with him, but I think he means the office at the treatment plant.
Oh, well, I didn't know, because they weren't, they usually help us out on, you know, seventy-five Barker when we have problems there, or where. They're pretty good, pretty good about helping out. But I did, it just says, "Repair roof on office building."
Yeah, I'll check.
At the stop leak, so I would like to know what the damage is and what address.
I'll check with him tomorrow and get the information.
Thank you very much. Nothing on that one. Zoning, zoning. Third from, third from the bottom, one oh-two Barker. Dogs by Design. Now, Dogs by Design is on Main Street, uncompletely, I don't know what happened here.
I think they're moving.
They're moving.
They're moving.
Okay, so they're moving from there, where, okay, that's what they're doing. They're moving. From where they're at to where the lady was going to open up?
Right.
Well, I never heard anything about that.
What, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, I see where it says, it says one oh-two Barker, Dogs by Design.
Right.
And they're approved to go in there when we wouldn't let the other lady go in there, so...
They're approved with condition, which is the site plan is needed, and the previous one had the same condition, and she did not wanna provide a site plan. There was an issue with the site plan.
Okay. Well, when I seen this, I thought, what's going on here? Oh, thank you.
I believe the owner is very happy about this situation. Actually, they're both happy about it, so...
The owner of what?
The owner of the property, so...
Barb Griffith.
Ms. Bellinger?
I just have a quick question based on that. So she's moving out of the house that she is right now on Main. Is there any, anybody know of any plans for that building or structure?
There's somebody that owns, I think there's two gentlemen that own it. Isn't there?
I haven't heard of what's gonna happen to it next.
It's another house. It was, it was the old post office.
It's a neat, neat building.
Yeah, it is a pretty neat building.
Yep. So as you can see, all of these were approved in the zoning compliance. It's, you know, some of them needed a few revisions, and, you know, I do know that Vidya Krishnan has been working carefully with the businesses that have been coming in to give them assistance if they, if they're confused about what they need to do, so it's been successful, cuz we're getting some compliance.
Number nine, did anybody see this? I mean, I know the guy quit, but I, how would you know who this is? I mean, there's no, there's nothing on here but a signature you can't read, so I, I mean, like I said, I know he's not here, but we should have some kinda address.
It's Mr. Rankin.
Yeah, okay. I couldn't read it, but, I mean, it's okay. Election cost. This is on the clerk's, the clerk office. At the meeting two weeks ago, I asked how much it was for the cleanup school, and she told me she had to put that in my box the next day, which I never got. I wished people would follow through when they tell you they're gonna do something. So it looks like, it looks like we've, we're gonna be close to five thousand dollars, you know. I know the township likes to have all millages in elections in the summer when all the kids are out of school and everybody's on vacation. But the township could've saved nearly five thousand dollars, or maybe more, than it costs to have a special election. We're gonna have another election in less than thirty days, so I think that was poorly done, but I know why, cuz the township knows how to get millage, so they have the election in the summertime when everybody's gone. It's too bad.
There was a school election in August, too, for Dexter, so even if there was only twenty voters, we still would've had to do the same process, still have the same election, so...
And did they pay for some? Who paid for it?
Well, it's a millage just like any other.
Excuse me?
It would be a school millage just like any other millage.
No, he's asking, did Dexter Schools reimburse you for running the election?
No, cuz it's part of our jurisdiction, so, and we still don't have the numbers.
Well, we didn't have to pass, we didn't have to have that election. We didn't have to vote for that. They voted for it because they want this millage passed. Wagner wanted the money, so we spent five thousand dollars for nothing, in my opinion.
And we are still working on getting the number for the ballots. Christine is emailing him quite often.
Okay.
But again, with all the new equipment, that's low on their priority list, so we know.
Okay. Good enough.
Soon as we get it, we'll get it to you.
All right. Is that all, Mr. Dockett?
That's it.
Okay, thank you much. Okay. Next item is what? Second call to the public. Do we have anyone who would like to speak tonight? Welcome, Mr. Dockett.
George, where's George been?
Yep, make sure it's turned on. Name, address? It's on, right? Oh, it wasn't on. Go ahead.
Tessa, there you go. Greetings, Mr. Dockett. Good to see you. I didn't come up here for this one reason, but I just wanna bring it to your attention. Over on Coyle Road and Delaware on the northeast corner, there's some property there. I've heard it belongs to the township. It's something you should look into, cuz right now property is going sky-high. If you want a few bucks in there for yourselves, selling it if you can, and so on like that, you should look at it. Not only for selling purposes, the money, but putting it on a tax roll, something that you could look at. And, you know, there's some money in there for the township, if it's, if it can be sold and so on like that, but it's something to look into. Again, Coyle and Delaware, the northeast corner.
Okay.
The real reason I'm up here, though, last Thursday, I was installed in the Kiwanis Club by our lieutenant governor, Jackie, and she has quite a job to do, I'll tell you that much. She oversees all the clubs in Ann Arbor, Chelsea, Howell, Brighton, and of course, our club. So she's busy not only with her own job and work here, but also with Kiwanis, and we appreciate all the work she does for Kiwanis. She does a good job. Anyhow, she installed our officers, and I'm here to kinda update you a little about your Kiwanis Club, what we're gonna do this year, what we're looking at, and so on like that there. This year, we're gonna still, we're still gonna sponsor the parade as we did last forty years, forty years or so. Jackie will be taking care of the, all the social media stuff, and she'll be a co-chair with myself, taking care of when it comes to the parade time, lineups, and so on like that. The other thing is, we'll have the five K, ten K run, and that'll be on the, I think, on the Saturday before July fourth, and so on like that. So we'll be busy with that, and we'll be working with the recreation department from the, from the high school, and so on like that, again, this year, and so on like that, so we're looking forward to those couple events for our community. The other thing, one thing Kiwanis has known about is our youth programs, and we're gonna continue on with it. And in fact, we're gonna add to it this year. As you know, we sponsor the Key Club, which is, which is in the high school, which means Kiwanis educates youth, and then we have the Builders Club at the intermediate school, and we'll sponsor that, and Tina's gonna be taking care of that from our club and so on like that. But the other two things, it's programs, they're not, there are two programs that are, I can't say sponsored, but recognized by the Michigan District of Kiwanis, and we're gonna add to them is the Fellowship of Christian Athletes and Law Enforcement Career Camp. The law enforcement career camp is, and I think Wagner's son attended, didn't you? And it's a student that's interested in going into law enforcement, and so on like that, so it's something for our young people to look forward to, and so on like that there. We also did add what you call, something new this year, what's called Everyday Hero. It's a person that does something, that doesn't wanna be recognized, that feels that, hey, I wanna do something for the community and help it out, and this is where you'll help, too, if you see somebody that's doing something that helps the community, and so on like that. The Kiwanis Club will recognize them, and we'll call them Everyday Hero. Well, we did give out a certificate at the meeting, and it went to Andy Locatos for his work with the bike path and so on like that. He went on his own, tried to get money to help out, and so on like that. This is the kinda people that we like for our community to get out and so on, and they should be recognized. They don't want any recognition, we realize that, but we wanna surely recognize them, so on like that. But anyhow, we still plan to work with the township and the library, and we'll work with the community center. Now, this is something that we have to look at, cuz I hear it's more than what we thought. As you know, the basement can't be used because there's no fire exit to get out. At one time, there was talk about putting a door in the back, but there may be some pipes in there, or so on like that. We'd like to look into it and see if we can get use for that building, cuz that basement is used just for storage. It could be used for the community and so on like that, so if we can put a door in there, I'd have to get together with Mr. Wagner there, and put a door in it so that can use by the, the community, more room downstairs, so... Anyhow, but this is some of the thing, and also we give away three scholarships, three one thousand dollar scholarships. And where do we get this money from? From our Rummy Sale. It's all come from there, and so on like that. But, you know, here we have deserving young people gonna graduate, and they do good, and so on like that, and I'm glad we could be a part of their, further their education by giving them scholarships. So as you say, we're gonna be pretty busy this year, and we look forward to a good year, and I just wanna tell you a little bit about it. Whenever I see a Kiwanis, just kind of pat them on the back, say, "Good job there." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Northeast corner of Delaware, did you say?
Yes. It's on the corner of...
Coyle.
Coyle.
Coyle, Coyle and Delaware.
Delaware.
Is it vacant, or is it...
It's a vacant... It's a vacant lot.
Okay.
And it looks like it's right next to that apartment complex, and it's been sitting there. In fact, grass was growing up, and everybody sees somebody went in there and cut it and so on like that.
It's all by the township.
Yeah, that's what they tell me.
I don't know.
That's what they tell me. I said, who, when I go over there, I says, "Who's supposed to be cutting this grass over?" Because our corporation has a bylaw that if grass gets high, you know, we can cut it and charge them for it, so like that, so... I was gonna go over and cut it, and I said, "Well, the township, I better tell them about it," and so on like that.
Okay.
But somebody did, I noticed somebody did cut it and so on like that.
Okay.
Anyhow, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Um, now, congratulations to you, too. You're the new president of the Kiwanis, correct?
Well...
You don't like to get pants on the back either, but...
Before I moved here, I lived in the Melvinale, Northern Allen Park Public Schools, and I was real active in the, um, Melvinale School System and so on like that. Teacher asked me to join the Melvinale Kiwanis Club, and I did, 45 years ago, so... Then when I, uh, uh, moved out here, uh, I joined the, they asked me to join the Whitmore Lake Kiwanis Club, and I said, "Yeah, if you let me start a key club," so we did. And then we started the morning club, unfortunately, pulled it a couple of years ago, but I was president of that, so this is the third time, so I'm a well-experienced president, so I'm ready to do the job.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
You, too. Okay, um, any other comments here? Oh, welcome.
Mary Devlin, 9211 Brookside Drive. Um, concerning the code enforcement, um, I am wondering, um, what happens after you go to someone's property? You let them know they're not in compliance, you give them tickets, et cetera. Um, I'm wondering, because the reason I'm talking about this is because a few years ago, out in the agricultural area, the, someone went out there, in fact, it was a supervisor at that time. This has been several years ago. The super went out, um, on a complaint by one of the neighbors. The property was all fenced in. I think it was wire fencing, I'm not sure. It was locked. The person that owned the property came out, would not allow them on the property. What happens when you are not allowed on the property, even if you are, uh, an official person to be able to, to give them, you know, in...
Our code enforcement guy couldn't go out there if it was posted, no trespassing. Now, I don't know if there's any other opportunity.
We get a court order that allows us to get entry, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, board member comments.
Oh, board member comments, that's right. Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to, um, I think, thank you, George, for the, um, I, I find that Kiwanis updates me just a whole bunch of really good and inspiring news. Thank you for bringing that, uh, to us. I appreciate that very much. There was a comment made earlier about, um, about elected officials being leaders, and I just, personally, I feel that we're not leaders, we're representatives, you know, and, um, that's just, it's more of a mindset than anything else. We're representatives, we're not leaders, per se. Um, the street name change is definitely a dilemma. I, I can feel for the people struggling with that. I don't have, I, obviously, we don't have a real clear-cut answer on that. That, that would be quite a challenge if all of a sudden we had to contend with that. We are working. As many of the trustees, just all of us here, we'd like to streamline the efficiency, and I'm glad that our manager brought that example from Garden City, how to streamline the, the process of, um, getting, uh, or, you know, getting your, getting your business and your house in line, you know, to jump through all the hurdles here and what's, whatnot. Um, Sunday, October 15th, from 1:00 to 4:00, like the chief says, we have the police and fire department open house. We have trunk or treat on the next weekend, October 22nd. I enjoyed the meeting. Um, thank everybody. Thank everybody for the good meeting, and, uh, thank the Lord for the wonderful day, and shop local, and love your neighbor. Thanks.
Mr. Dockett, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, I'd like to remind people to buy and use local services if they can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Zelnok? Have a good evening. Okay. Ms. Manley?
Just thanks to everybody that came out. Thanks, George. Again, very good news, good to hear. That's it. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Otto?
Yes, um, as part of my position in Kiwanis, I am also on the membership committee, so I'm gonna take this time to extend out to the public. If you are interested in joining a phenomenal group, and I will say, um, we are small but mighty. Uh, we do have a small group. We do a lot of good for the community. If you wanna partake in it, if you just want a small piece of it, uh, please come out and visit us. We're on the first and third Thursday of the month, and, uh, we would welcome you with open arms. Also, uh, to talk about the Halloween trunk or treat, um, I just wanna let everybody know that if you enjoyed Batman at the Fourth of July Parade, uh, Batman will also be at the trunk or treat.
Interject a question related to your first and third Thursday. Where and what time?
Uh, it's the first and third Thursdays at the Northfield Community Center at 7:00. The meeting starts 6:30. We, we do meet and greet.
Okay. Good, thank you. All right, um, I, I do know that there's a fundraiser to raise scholarship money for Whitmore Lake High School seniors on Thursday at the Links, uh, the Brighton, um, no, the Whitmore Lake Chamber is putting that on, and I'm sorry, I... Part of 4:30, you got it? Yeah, I sent that out. $25, yes.
Can you give us one more time again, what it, what and where is it?
4:30. It's at the Links this Thursday. 4:30 it starts. It's $25, and you get to taste five beers.
Five beers.
And how long does it go until?
That, they didn't say, but I wanna say 4:30 to 6:00.
I'm thinking that's true.
This is a Whitmore Lake fundraiser?
Mm-hmm. For, um, a scholarship.
Right, okay. So, and the Links has pretty darn good food, I have to say, so. And I don't know about beer. I'm not, I'm not a beer lover, but, um, they have wine, too, so. Anyway, well, okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, Zelnok and Bellinger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.